Five. Call a meeting to order. And the first order of business is closed meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Hold on.
Jumped ahead of you, Debbie.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Friskowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Section 2.2-3711, Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business or Industry's Interest in Locating or Expanding Its Facilities in the Community. Project 2020-028. Discussion Consideration or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining or Resignation of Specific Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body. One, the Agricultural and Forested District Advisory Committee. Two, the Economic Development Authority. We are in closed session.
Are we supposed to vote again?
We going.
After seven fifteen, we have a motion to come out of closed session.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Chair Fajkowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, we're out of closed session and we need to certify closed session is, let me go ahead and read my spiel here. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening, conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, call and roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Chair Fajkowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, we're out of closed session and we need to certify closed session is, let me go ahead and read my spiel here. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening, conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, call and roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Fajkowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now with our county administrator would lead us in invocation of pledge.
If we could please let's rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clear opinion and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, under presentations, recognitions, and awards, we have Virginia Department of Transportation, and I believe Mr. Chris Price is with us today.
David cut out on me today, headed to Williamsburg, so.
Bosses will do that to you sometimes.
They will, in a hurry too, so he gave me some notes, I'll go over what some updates that he provided. So there was a question, as I understand, about a speed study on one fourteen. The Traffic Engineering Division has started taking the speed data, and I think he emailed this morning about that, so they'll be working on that. There was a question about Fairview Church, the low water slab, that's probably going to start in the spring, we will try to start it this fall, and we had pushed to have everything cleared to do it, and getting ready to, and it was brought up about paving, so it's probably going to take about a month and a half to do, so, and we'll raise the road up a little bit. So someone brought up a good point, we're getting ready to move forward, and said, well, how are you going to pave it once you raise it? So we had to back up and put that one off a little bit, but that one's moving forward, shouldn't have any problem getting that in this spring. David does not have any information on a Meadow Creek through truck request, but he said that he will prod Traffic Engineering Division for something on that. So Mr. Fajkowski, so there was a question about the bridge work, did you talk to David about that on Route eleven?
I did not talk to him about it.
Okay.
I had made mention of it at a previous meeting and.
So it's State Force, our State Force Bridge Division is replacing the slabs on two bridges, two box culverts, I think essentially, so we have an update on that that should be open, they're looking for the first week of December to open that back up. So I guess if everybody can bear with us down there, I know the traffic control's a little funky coming through there and putting them on that one lane, I drove it today, I didn't see a whole lot of real problems with it, but.
But we haven't detoured the interstate yet either, so that'll be the.
Yeah.
When it's detoured and then somebody decides they want to make a left turn somewhere, it'll back up pretty good.
Let's hope that does not happen.
Let's.
I will go with David to Williamsburg if that happens. I will get out of here, but, yeah, we probably need to think about a plan in case that does happen, so we'll definitely look into that.
So are they doing both sides or just?
Just that one, they're doing two structures, and they're both on the, I guess it would be eastbound or northbound. So first of December, the Route six oh three bridge is supposed to be open November twentieth, we'll see how that goes, but that's what they're shooting for. We have started the six oh nine project, revenue sharing project, we replaced several pipe down there, and we're bringing in a contractor starting Monday to start grading, putting down stone, and we'll try to surface treat that in about three to four weeks. So that should be finished up. There was a question about Forge Road back in September, David had given me notes that it is all V-dots, but the Floyd County line is very close, it was paid by a private landowner, not by V-dot. So we're going to check into that.
Since you mentioned that, I just got a quick question on that. So if it was paid by a private contractor, it's not maintained by V-dot?
Well.
Or that's what you're looking into?
I'm not real sure, no, it's V-dots road.
Okay.
It is V-dots road, it was paid by a private landowner, not by V-dot, I would have to get a little more, what I can do is ask David if he'll provide a little more.
Okay, and before you leave, if you want to take these pictures with you.
Okay, that'd be great.
That might work, I'll pass them down to our secretary, you can get them from her, but, okay.
All right. Walnut Springs brush cutting, says that he wrote it, looks like somebody has done some brush cutting down there, said it didn't look too bad. He had mentioned if there's a specific location, he says a middle end, beginning, something like that, that would be a little more helpful, he said he did see some brush cutting, but.
I'm in there about seven times a day, and I haven't seen it, I didn't see any today. Going in is just past Cox's driving range on the left.
Okay.
So it's when I actually come back out is the worst, now, there are locations all the way through there where there's just a couple trees, oh, let me use my hands, but, so, yeah. And then, I was trying to think, it's not at the end, but it's close to the end, there's a sharp right-hand turn going in, and it's right in front of Bill McDonald's house actually, where he's got his little horse rink, there's several hanging out right there, if I meet a car, I'm tearing the mirrors off the bus.
All right, that's fine, and I can check with the superintendent in that area this week, and.
Like I say, I don't know what they've cut, but it doesn't appear, I mean, if you go in there in a car, you're probably fine.
Yeah.
But up eight or ten feet where those mirrors are, then.
Yeah, and I'll mention that, I mean, it's a little different for a bus, cutting it for the, and they may have sent a crew in there and didn't explain it real well, maybe cut a little lower, so, that's no problem, we can take care of that.
If he'll call me when he's there, I'll come up and be glad to show him.
That'd be perfect, I can come out too, I can give you, can give you a call. All right, do have an update on Taylor Hollow, we're working on getting clearance, environmental clearance for the low water slab, we're hoping to have a contractor in there in about probably two months, three months, do it this winter, so we're hoping, that's our plan there. So we should be able to get that done, give you an update on Yellow Sulphur Road, that is supposed to go to advertisement in January or February, it's a ninety-day process, so January, February, March, April, notice proceed to the contractor, and usually starts, so we'll be starting in May or June on Yellow Sulphur Road. So we have about, we have probably ninety-five percent of the right-of-way acquired, donated right-of-way, we got a couple more property owners to work through, but, so that'd be a big project, that'd be a good one to get off the list. So it looks like that's the updates he gave me that he wanted me to provide to you guys, I have some maintenance items that our crews have been working on, if you have any interest in certain, I have quite the list, so enter certain roads, I can see if we have these here, it looks like they've been doing some road machining on unpaved roads, some ditching, still doing a little bit of mowing, I think all of our mowing is completed, so I know what the primaries it is.
As were identified in the motion convening conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the board. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call and roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Jeffrey Fajkowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now with our county administrator would lead us in invocation and pledge.
If we could, please let's rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clear peace and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Okay, under presentations, recognitions, and awards, we have Virginia Department of Transportation, and I believe Mr. Chris Price is with us today.
Yeah. David cut out on me today, headed to Williamsburg, so.
Bosses will do that to you sometimes.
They will, in a hurry too, so he gave me some notes, I'll go over what some updates that he provided. So there was a question, as I understand, about a speed study on 114. The Traffic Engineering Division has started taking the speed data, and I think he emailed this morning about that, so they'll be working on that. There was a question about Fairview Church, the low water slab, that's probably going to start in the spring. We will try to start it this fall, and we had pushed to have everything cleared to do it, and getting ready to, and it was brought up about paving, so it's probably going to take about a month and a half to do, so, and we'll raise the road up a little bit. So someone brought up a good point, we're getting ready to move forward, and said, well, how are you going to pave it once you raise it? So we had to back up and put that one off a little bit, but that one's moving forward, shouldn't have any problem getting that in this spring. David does not have any information on Meadow Creek through truck request, but he said that he will prod Traffic Engineering Division for something on that. So Mr. Fajkowski, so there was a question about the bridge work, did you talk to David about that on Route 11?
I did not talk to him about it.
Okay.
I had made mention of it at a previous meeting and.
So it's a state force, our state force bridge division is replacing the slabs on two bridges, two box culverts, I think essentially, so we have an update on that that should be open, they're looking for the first week of December to open that back up. So I guess if everybody can bear with us down there, I know the traffic control's a little funky coming through there and putting them on that one lane. I drove it today, I didn't see a whole lot of real problems with it, but.
But we haven't detoured the interstate yet either, so that'll be the.
Yeah.
When it's detoured and then somebody decides they want to make a left turn somewhere, it'll back up pretty good.
Let's hope that does not happen.
Let's.
I will go with David to Williamsburg if that happens. I will get out of here, but, yeah, and we probably need to think about a plan in case that does happen, so we'll definitely look into that.
So are they doing both sides or just?
Just that one, they're doing two structures, and they're both on the, I guess it would be eastbound or northbound.
Thank you.
So first of December, the Route 603 bridge is supposed to be open November 20th. We'll see how that goes, but that's what they're shooting for. We have started the 609 project, revenue sharing project, we replaced several pipe down there, and we're bringing in a contractor starting Monday to start grading, putting down stone, and we'll try to surface treat that in about three to four weeks. So that should be finished up. There's a question about Forge Road back in September. David had given me notes that it is all VDOTs, but the Floyd County line is very close, it was paid by a private landowner, not by VDOT. So we're going to check into that.
Since you mentioned that, I just got a quick question on that. So if it was paid by a private contractor, it's not maintained by VDOT?
Well.
Or that's what you're looking into?
I'm not real sure. No, it's VDOT's road.
Okay.
It is VDOT's road. It was paid by a private landowner, not by VDOT. I would have to get a little more, what I can do is ask David if he'll provide a little more.
Okay, and.
To that.
Before you leave, if you want to take these pictures with you.
Okay, that'd be great.
That might work, I'll pass them down to our secretary, you can get them from her, but, okay. Thank you.
All right. Walnut Springs brush cutting, says that he wrote it, looks like somebody has done some brush cutting down there, said it didn't look too bad. He had mentioned if there's a specific location, he says a middle end, beginning, something like that, that would be a little more helpful. He said he did see some brush cutting, but.
I'm in there about seven times a day, and I haven't seen it, I didn't see any today. Going in is just past Cox's driving range on the left.
Okay.
So it's when I actually come back out is the worst. Now, there are locations all the way through there where there's just a couple trees, oh, let me use my hands, but, so yeah.
Okay.
And then, I was trying to think, it's not at the end, but it's close to the end, there's a sharp right-hand turn going in, and it's right in front of Bill McDonald's house, actually, where he's got his little horse rink, there's several hanging out right there that, if I meet a car, I'm tearing the mirrors off the bus.
Okay. All right, that's fine, and I can check with the superintendent in that area this week, and.
Like I say, I don't know what they've cut, but it doesn't appear, I mean, if you go in there in a car, you're probably fine.
Yeah.
But up eight or 10 feet where those mirrors are, then.
Yeah, and I'll mention that, I mean, it's a little different for a bus, cutting it for the, and they may have sent a crew in there and didn't explain it real well, maybe cut a little lower, so, that's no problem, we can take care of that.
If he'll call me when he's there, I'll come up and be glad to show him.
That'd be perfect, I can come out too, I can give you, can give you a call. All right, do have an update on Taylor Hollow. We're working on getting clearance, environmental clearance for the low water slab, we're hoping to have a contractor in there in about probably two months, three months, do it this winter, so we're hoping, that's our plan there. So we should be able to get that done. Give you an update on Yellow Sulphur Road, that is supposed to go to advertisement in January or February, it's a 90-day process, so January, February, March, April, notice proceed to the contractor, and usually starts, so we'll be starting in May or June on Yellow Sulphur Road. So we have about, we have probably 95% of the right-of-way acquired, donated right-of-way, we got a couple more property owners to work through, but, so that'd be a big project, that'd be a good one to get off the list. So it looks like that's the updates he gave me, that he wanted me to provide to you guys. I have some maintenance items that our crews have been working on, if you have any interest at certain, I have quite the list, so enter certain roads, I can see if we have these here. It looks like they've been doing some road machining on unpaved roads, some ditching, still doing a little bit of mowing. I think all of our mowing is completed, so I know what the primaries it is. Machine roads, lavender, Papa Hollow, it always comes up, ditching, some brush cleanup on 612, 787, and the 609 project. So that's kind of what we've been doing the last month, if you guys have any questions, I can, or anything you want me to.
Oh, there's always questions, Chris.
Yeah.
So get your pen ready, and we'll go around the room.
All right.
Supervisor King?
No, I have no question, but I do appreciate the update on Meadow Creek and all of them.
Okay.
Supervisor Blevins?
I'm going to actually be in conference with David sometime this week on that speed study and areas off Route 114, so I'd appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you.
Good.
Supervisor Damots?
I don't have any questions, the majority of my roads are in Blacksburg town limits, and so I actually sent them a list of questions this week about some road concerns, but thanks for being here, we appreciate you.
Thanks.
Supervisor Shepherd, do you have anything else?
I do, I had one constituent that asked me, and I guess it's about the point, because when they painted the yellow lines on Keister Branch and in that area, they didn't paint Mount Zion or Long Shop Road this year, and I was, he was wondering why they didn't, and I'd asked David, and I don't think he ever got me an answer.
Well, I do have an idea of the answer. So they were striped before, they're still striped, but they just wasn't restripped, is that correct?
That's correct.
So our traffic engineer, and you're going to see this more on, well, statewide, actually, there's been a decision made to pretty much up the qualification for striping on these roads. So traffic counts, widths, certain items that would be looked into will qualify for restriping. The ones that aren't getting restripped will not be restripped. Unfortunately, for a lot of people, that striping will fade out, and Mount Zion will no longer be a striped road, or if it gets repaved, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
But it's kind of curious that they painted in Keister Branch.
Yeah, Keister Branch, I don't know, yeah, that is odd how some of them hit, I mean, Keister Branch, Keister Branch probably gets, well, Mount Zion gets some traffic too.
Well, what I was going to say is it dumps out on Mount Zion.
That's true, yeah. And they may not, one thing too, I'll say this, our paint crews, they're still finishing up some of, with 2020 being 2020.
Right.
They're finishing up some of 2019 stuff too.
Right.
So it may just be something like that, but the restriping is something you guys need to be aware of, and if you have questions about it, we can provide a little more answer, but you're going to be seeing that more, you will see roads, people will say, you know, why is my road getting restripped? Now, Keister Branch, I don't, it is kind of weird, it connects to Mount Zion, and Mount Zion's not striped, but.
Will they do these studies periodically, or they have to be requested?
No, no, they did it, they did it on their own statewide, and pretty much handed over, these are the roads that will be restripped, and these are the roads that will no longer be restripped, therefore going fading out or being repaved and not striped. So that's, you know, you're probably not going to see, I mean, even roads that have been striped last year, year before, they're going to, you're going to see it two or three more years, but you know, the next couple of years, you're going to probably hear some questions about that. So if you have questions about specifics road, specific roads like Mount Zion, we can look into that, and that could be the case.
I guess that was my question, like, do you have to request a traffic study?
Oh, no, no, we can find out, I have the list.
Okay.
I have the list of the roads that are getting striped, so I can check, I can find out what roads in that area, Mount Zion, Glade, all those.
All right, that's fine, yeah, thank you.
Getting restripped.
Supervisor Biggs?
Was that a budget-saving thing?
Yes.
But they looked at the safety?
They did, they did, the qualifications, it was budget, I'm speaking for them, so I shouldn't do that, but I know budget played a part, so, you know, I don't know how big a part, you know, I would probably have to get that answered from them, but, yeah, I mean, there's a cost savings involved, obviously.
Well, I don't have any other questions, but thank you for being here.
Mm-hmm.
Vice Chair Bone?
There's a road, and I'm not for sure, I don't know for sure what the name of it is, it might be 628, and it might be another through road from Mount Tabor to Catawba. There's a mill halfway down.
Okay.
And right next to that mill is big pipes, because a stream crosses the road, it's gravel road.
Right.
Most of it. And whenever there's a lot of rain, like, a lot of the stone just covers the road.
Okay.
Makes those big culvert things.
Just driver on?
Probably.
Yeah.
I know I've talked to Mr. Clark about it before, and there really wasn't a lot to do for it, but I figured since you're not Mr. Clark, maybe I could ask you to, if there's, you know.
We just did.
I think some serious work has to be done, because any big rain in the spring, for example, or the summer, I mean, they have to go out, they have to get big machinery to redig and replace those things and stuff.
So we did replace one of them, finished up about a month ago, maybe a little less. We replaced one of them that blew out the most, replaced it and actually put in concrete headwalls on them, and anchored them down, and we put concrete in the middle in the joint too.
Hmm.
So, didn't get them all, but they did get that one, and that's one right below the mill, it goes kind of in a weird.
Yeah, yeah.
That one there, I don't think it's going anywhere, we upsized it, we put it in concrete.
Excellent.
There's still plenty more down there that could, but that one.
That was the most worried some, actually.
That was, and we, it actually looks really good.
Excellent, I'll go down and look.
Yeah, if you get down that way, check it out, it's concrete headwalls, it's anchored in pretty good.
Awesome, thank you.
So, yeah. But we'll keep an eye on it, I know that one's, when I first got to VDOT, that one's always been been an issue, I think they did a project, I don't know, 20 years ago down there, I guess it used to be open forward at one time, and they put those pipes in, and I don't think that.
So, so as you get closer to Catawba, you can see all of that stone fill, and I don't know what you call it.
Right.
Just, the creek bed is covered in it, and it's, you know, it's no longer a beautiful creek anymore, you know?
Yeah. Well, that's something we can, I mean, I can look at it.
Thanks.
And see what we can do. I've asked before, I've asked agencies, actually 609, Bonner's Run was one of them, I asked the agencies to clean out the creek, we had a, there's a section there that floods, and I don't know, it just, I think the agencies, they see it as clean stone.
Yeah.
And they say you're going to make more of a mess and more disturbance cleaning it out, but it's.
I think this one has so much stone.
Yeah.
That you could probably dig a foot down and not disturb anything.
That's, yeah, I'll definitely look at it though.
Okay, thanks, that's it.
All right, Chris, I don't have any further questions, just remind you to grab those photographs.
Okay.
Of Forge Road, and we appreciate you coming out, and don't be a stranger.
Yeah, sounds good.
Come on back.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, next item is going to be a public hearing on special use permit for Selco partnership. And is Emily moving this way? She is.
Got to do my sanitation. You're on it? Good. Thank you.
Good evening. I will share that we have more Meadow Creek news coming your way in December. The realignment is complete, and you guys will authorize the right-of-way to be changed. Sneak peek. Very exciting to see that project finish. For tonight's public hearing, we have an application for SUP, it is for a tower. I'm going to give my presentation, sanitize the area, and then the applicant is here, Attorney Lori Schweller, as well as Larry Bickings, who represents Verizon Wireless. The tower is located in Reiner, it's actually just outside the district of Reiner, so if you see Route 8 right here, the subject parcel itself is 126 acres, so it shows up fairly sizable on our vicinity map, but the lease area is only 70 feet by 70 feet, and we'll go into those details. It's located just off Union Valley on the north side. So here's Union Valley at the bottom of the screen there, and the subject parcel is this large piece, and basically, sort of at where the farm road has the Y there, you can see that's the general area for the tower location, the proposed height's 195 feet with a four-foot lightning rod, and it is, as shown on the concept plan here, you can see the lease area, you can, if you go to sheet Z2, you can sort of get a close-up of what the area will look like, the fence, even where some of that existing vegetation is and will remain, and then on Z3 that you had in your package, you can also see that it's a monopole-style Staff did their analysis and looked at all our usual items, as you can imagine, the transportation, once construction is done, there'll be one vehicle per month, the entrance will be improved, it's currently using the entrance out of farm road, it's also used for the farm, and so it can track up a little bit, so that entrance will be improved via a land use permit with VDOT, and they will be required to do a site plan if the application's approved. Doesn't require any water or sewer, and then of course, one of the other items we look at is, it doesn't generate any additional children. From a noise and light perspective, the only noise that will be associated with it is the generator that kicks on during power outages, and there's no lighting required by FAA, and there's also none proposed on the application. This is located outside of our historic district that we have in Reiner, and there's very limited visual impact on any, anywhere really, we'll go into and show you some of the balloon test and photo simulations, so you can get a sense of that, but the monopole and the location of the tower gives it great reception area, and also, it's not highly visible. And from an environmental standpoint, there's very little clearing that will take place, it's not located in a floodplain, and of course, any ENS and stormwater requirements will have to be met, should they move on to the site plan stage. The parcel itself is located right outside, you can see the Reiner Village line actually is there on the left side of the parcel, so it's right outside of the village, topographically and population-wise, in a very good location to reach the most, and still not, and still be in an area that resource stewardship. You'll notice when we talk about towers in the comprehensive plan, one of the things we look at first is co-location, they, the applicant can speak to this a little bit more, but the co-location options were not available, they have proposed this monopole with their location on it, they've not ruled out future co-locations with other interested parties. And then, if you can't co-locate, we look at newly constructed towers being located to provide the least negative impact, the least impact to citizens in the area, and then we have a ranking, this is rank six out of the 12, kind of just, it's not too urban, it's not too rural, it actually falls in a pretty good location from the qualifications that we look at in the comprehensive plan for consistency. As I mentioned, the tower is proposed to be 195 feet with a four-foot lightning rod, it would have flush-mounted antennas, it will not only have the flush-mounted antennas that we're used to seeing, but as you saw in the monopole markup, and you'll see in the photo sims, it doesn't have any of the large discs or any dishes and things like that. The tower's going to be used by Verizon, and as I mentioned, potentially available for co-location, and the tower finish is going to be the non-reflective galvanized steel finish, sometimes you'll notice when we talk to you about these applications, if it's in a heavily wooded area, they have more of a brown finish, and it fits in with the tree line, in this particular case, the non-reflective galvanized steel is the least noticeable finish. In addition to the analysis, there's quite a bit of vegetation on the site, we have a couple of photos that can show you that at the ground level, but you can also see it here from our aerial ortho view, so we're not suggesting any additional screening, they'll have quite a bit, plus they'll have their own fencing, and there were some fuchsia analysis maps that were provided to you in your packet, and those give you a really rough idea, obviously, it doesn't, you know, you'll notice that it casts a wide view, I don't think people in Pricis Fork will be staring at these, but certainly, it gives you a sense of what that bare earth visibility is like, I have some of those maps, if you have any additional questions on those, but those are just sort of to give you an idea of the area that can be covered. If you're on Union Valley, the view on the left sort of shows you looking up towards the tower site, and then you get a closer view here, you can see that there, those existing trees are going to give it a nice ground-level buffer for any of those machinery that's at ground level, that we usually ask for screening on. We did hold a balloon test, the applicant did that on the 23rd of September in the morning, that is when the winds are the lowest, and you can see here the different locations that were submitted to you of the different photo areas, and we're going to click through a few of these, even though they weren't produced by staff, staff was able to view the balloon test, and felt like they're professionally put-together pictures kind of told a great story, and so we've included several of those. This is the actual balloon, if you were on Union Valley, and you have to sort of look for it, you can see that dot there, and in the same actual view, they provided a photo simulation of what the actual tower would look like there. You can see from the ground, there's quite a bit of screening there. They also gave a couple of other photo sites, you can see this is at the entrance for the Reiner Meble Home Park. This is another photo sent off, photo sim off of Salisbury Lane. This is the entrance to Auburn Hills, because of the tree line and the mountain behind it, this one is very difficult to see, almost impossible to see once you got further into Auburn Hills and Cloverly, the visibility was quite low. So after the analysis and work with the application, staff came up with six conditions that were recommended, those are related to the height, the lighting, the concept plan that they would have to follow, basically what they submitted to us on the concept plan, that it will be a monopole and will not have, it'll follow our basic monopole guidelines, so the wires and things will be inside of the structure. It will use that non-reflective galvanized steel finish, and that there won't be platforms or dishes on the structure above the tree line, which is a fairly common condition we use on towers. The Planning Commission held their hearing, they recommended by seven to zero with one absent, that those conditions and a recommendation of approval be forwarded to you, all adjoining property owners were notified, in accordance with both county code and the state code, the site was posted in accordance with our code, the legal ads were placed in the Roto Times, we heard from approximately seven individuals, most with questions, once the signs went up out on Union Valley, they would call with different questions related to the location and the height. We had no speakers at the public hearing, and the commission had very little discussion. One of the points that the applicant, I'm sure she'll touch on tonight, also brought up, is that access to higher-speed data availability is something that the county has certainly been spending time on, and this should add some assistance to those in the Reiner area that has been lacking, so she'll touch on those items. The commission did view the application favorably. That's all that I have, I'm glad to answer any questions, otherwise I will prepare the podium for our applicant.
Are there any questions for Emily?
So you didn't have anybody come?
So you didn't have anybody come and speak against it?
We did not. We had no one speak.
Against it?
Against it or for it?
Okay, thank you.
Speakers.
Okay.
I'm going to pull up Lori's presentation. And I will let Lori take it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams Mullen, representing Verizon Wireless. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight. I'll try to keep my presentation a little bit brief since Ms. Gibson did such an excellent job. You've seen the site location, of course. And the parcel is zoned A1, and telecommunications facilities are permitted by special use permit, which we're requesting your approval of tonight. We're just in the A1 district, just outside of the village of Reiner. And we're over 1,000 feet to Union Valley Road and to the nearest homes. In fact, the distance to the closest boundary line besides Union Valley Road is over 1,100 feet. We did, of course, look at the co-location opportunities and the closest towers. Verizon Wireless already has facilities on those. So there's a Dominion Power pole on I-81 that Verizon Wireless uses, its antennas are there. And then it's on this US Cellular Tower to the south. So the purpose of this site is to provide additional data capacity and coverage to Reiner and to the surrounding residential areas. At this point in the US, 60% of adults live in homes with no wireline telephone. So wireless has become such an essential utility. I'm sure we've all noticed that, especially this year. But internet connectivity is always needed to connect to online education, work at home, and for government events such as this one. There are also increasing, there's an increasing usage of health-oriented applications through wireless. The average US household's internet data usage has jumped 38-fold in the past 10 years, three and a half times in the past five years. And just since the beginning of COVID-19, those statistics have skyrocketed. The average home consumption of data increased 47% during the first quarter of this year compared to that same timeframe last year. Just in March 2020, we can look at how data consumption on smartphones was up 75% over March 2019. Also, as you may know, the governor has put forward the Commonwealth Connect Report. And the goal for Commonwealth is for functionally universal broadband coverage within 10 years, which would provide growth in small business revenue and jobs, an 18% increase in agricultural output through connected agriculture technologies, and expected property value increases of 3% to 8%. Unfortunately, at this point, 64% of Virginia's rural population lacks access to broadband. And fortunately for us, rural property values go up when you have better wireless internet available. A recent study from the 887 remote rural US counties, that means they're not adjacent to a metropolitan area, found that, very consistent with Virginia's percentage, only 63% have access to broadband. And a 10% increase in the number of residents with access to a relatively low-speed internet increases average housing values by $611, which of course increases your real property taxes. And finally, it's good to know that home buyers value reliable home wireless more than any other thing they're looking at when looking for a home other than good hospitals. Just briefly, the site layout. As you can see, this is our lease area. And so there is an existing access road, so very little clearing needs to be done. Just needs to be widened a little bit. It'd be a 12-foot-wide access road. And Verizon Wireless would improve that with gravel. There's vegetation along the sides of that. And then there is, of course, vegetation that would screen the lower portion of the monopole and the ground equipment. You've seen this overall site plan. It's 845 feet to the closest residence, which is owned by the lessor. And this is that enlarged site plan. Once again, you can see the tree coverage there. This monopole would be available for co-location by other wireless providers. So if AT&amp;T or T-Mobile wanted to co-locate and provide service from this location, they would simply apply to KGI, which is Verizon Wireless's third-party manager. And then they could put their antennas to provide service to those customers in the area as well. I don't think I need to go through the photo simulations again unless you'd like to see those. Because we are surrounded by a number of larger developments in that area, we reached out to, did a little bit of research and found out how to get in touch with the homeowners associations for Auburn Hills and Cloverly and Hillcrest. And so reached out to those communities to see if they had any questions, if they'd like to have a discussion about, about the proposal. And we didn't have any, you know, response that, yes, we would like to have a community meeting on that. But of course, we were always available for questions and are available to you tonight to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the board?
Do you have one, but I wanted to see if Todd had any first. First, I appreciate how thorough the presentation was and how, how much you've involved Todd's district in making sure that this is something that the community doesn't object to. I do have a question about co-location, just more from a practicality standpoint. Because, you know, we are talking about expanding broadband, expanding wireless access, and the importance to our rural areas. That's, you know, something that's very important to every member of this board. Is co-location kind of a given? So if somebody was to approach your parent company to lease space on it, is it kind of just assumed that as long as they can agree on terms, that its permission is granted? Or is it something that is harder than that?
All of the major wireless providers, internet providers, wireless providers have co-location agreements. So they've paved the way for those agreements. So they would expect to be able to co-locate on one another's facilities, assuming that there's room, there's structural integrity. So usually, they would have to submit an application describing what type of equipment they want to put there. They might have to do a structural analysis, have an engineer do it just to make sure, you know, 10 years down the road, there's not too much equipment on it already. And so, but I think the answer to your question is it's more of a given than a struggle because they all, all of the wireless providers want to co-locate on one another's facilities to avoid building structures where structures already exist, which is in almost every jurisdiction, you know, a tenant of your comprehensive plan, you don't want unnecessary support structures.
When I kind of look at this as like a field of dreams a little bit, if you build it, the monopole, others will co-locate.
You got it.
So I kind of view it as an opportunity to expand.
Exactly.
For all providers. I mean, it's great that we have Verizon here because they're so prolific in our community. But I think it's an opportunity for a lot of providers to come in as well. Thank you for your explanation.
Supervisor King?
Just one, excuse me, just one question. If first responders needed a spot on that tower, could they receive one?
It's actually the same process. Once Verizon engaged KGI to handle all its incoming requests, it does that on a non-discriminatory basis. So if the county, you know, fire and rescue, if, if any, any entity whatsoever wanted to use that tower, they would go through the same process and certainly would be welcome to put in that application. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Bowen?
On slide 11, there's only, I don't understand one thing about your agricultural 18%. I couldn't understand what you were talking about. And I appreciate your presentations, both at the Planning Commission and here. You know, I just don't remember seeing that on your presentation at the Planning Commission. Can you tell me what that is?
Sure. Well, I pulled it straight from the Commonwealth Connect Report. It's a statistic from that report, which is published online. So I put that earl there for anyone interested in looking at it. But actually, it's from the use of wireless technologies in agriculture. I don't know what those technologies are, so I can't elaborate on, on that. But this is the statistic in the Commonwealth Connect Report, that there would be an 18% increase.
I mean, I know about like Midwest, they use all this wireless to have, like their tractors go down the rows. I mean, unmanned tractors and stuff like that. But I don't know about Virginia.
Well, I love your question, and I will go back and do some research. I should know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Blevins, did you have something?
No question. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
No questions, but I'm glad that it will increase the service area in that area. That's really good.
I've got a question and a comment. My question is, how many customers do you hope to pick up that justify putting in this tower?
I don't know that picking up customers is the goal here. The goal is to better serve existing customers. So these days, when, when we're looking to get approval to construct a new tower, it's not necessarily to provide coverage, but to increase the capacity for existing coverage because there's just so much more usage of each tower. And the technology's different from 10 years ago. It used to be, you know, all the old towers that are on the mountaintops as you drive down 81, those using the older technologies, the 2G and 3G, those could go for miles, five miles, even 10 miles, depending on obstructions. Now that we're into 4G, it's a much shorter propagation distance. So we typically need to have these monopoles two and a half to three miles apart. That's pretty normal. And within that service area, as more and more people are using wireless for more and more things, those existing sites get overtaxed. So we need those. So if you've got sites on either side, on 81 and to the south, you need that fill-in to provide the service people expect in that, in that area. So, you know, our radio frequency engineers identified the Reiner area as one in need of better service. So it's not, it's not a, the goal is not to get more customers, it's to better serve the customers that Verizon Wireless has.
I think you need to put up about 100 more then, if that's the case. Because I get calls from constituents all the time that would love to have one of those poles on their property, so.
Well, I hope this does the job.
Well, my comment was, you have, it has to be a tremendous reduction in people complaining about these poles than years ago. It seemed like it was, everybody thought they were just, they made the skyline look horrible and all this. But when you mentioned the March 2020, a significant use in wireless, I thought, hmm, I think something else happened in March of 2020. And I think we all know what it was. And everybody's home, and they got to use their phones. So we appreciate you giving us this report. Thank you very much. And is there any follow-up questions?
I just have one comment on your point about the, the tree line visibility. I was in Fredericksburg a few years ago, and they have those big, tall, lob-lot-like pines with the long needles. There was a tower within 100 feet of the road that I drove by. And the first time I saw it, it was like, oh, that's a big tree. No, wait a minute, it's a tower. And it was decorated with limbs and piney. I mean, it was just.
It looks like something out of Minecraft.
Like one of the trees. So, anyway.
All right, well, they can make Christmas trees out of them now. I'm sure they'll pop up everywhere. But, but thank you very much. I, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
That's all you have on that, Emily?
That's all I have. You can open the hearing, and I'll pull the slide back up.
Okay. All right. We had nobody sign up to speak at this hearing in reference to the telecommunication tower. But if you would like to speak, you're welcome to come up. Give us your name and your address, and you would have four minutes.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. My name is Hans Taylor. I live at 115 Hearthstone Drive down in Blacksburg. And although I'm talking about this issue that's over in District D, I have friends and family that live in many of these districts, including yours, Todd. And they're very busy with work and stressed out, and they cannot have the time to come down and do something like this. So just want to preface with that. So growing up in rural Indiana, I, like many others, have experienced the realities of what happens when a community relies on powerful companies from elsewhere for prospects of a better life. Originally home to one of Earth's largest wetlands, our lands were drained and turned into industrial landscapes for monoculture farming. And our rivers were used to fuel industrial power plants. Our current situation here is not so dire, and it will never be if we remain vigilant and choose not to cater to outside interests like Verizon. My partner and I moved to this community because it appeared to offer a balance. It provided us an opportunity to earn a decent living while finding a way to preserve the few remaining natural and historical parts in the heart of Appalachia. Here's a community that relies on its local teachers and its mechanics and its carpenters and many other trades to sustain itself. And now, more recently, the community continues to thrive from its locally grown tech startups. I came here this evening to share my story and my thoughts on a communications tower proposal. After reviewing the 56-page analysis, the proposed site, existing communication services, and forthcoming market options, I firmly believe that this proposal is inconsistent with the needs and values of our community. Firstly, the landowners, as well as all the others who stand to profit, including that lawyer and the agent from this proposal, do not actually live on the site, nor near the site, nor even in the county. In fact, they all live hundreds of miles from our community. This is information you could find online, but it's quite obvious. I suspect that if they were to live on this land or even near it, they would oppose their own proposal of a 200-foot tower, equivalent in height to a 15-story building. And as such, this proposal is inconsistent with our notions of fairness, due unto others as you would do to you. Secondly, the Board of Supervisors, in reflecting the needs and values of our community, designated this land as resource stewardship land in October of 2004. And as such, Section B of PLU 1.2.3 states that with the exception of public parks and outdoor recreation facilities, research, sorry, resource stewardship areas will not be a preferred location for new community facilities. Additionally, this proposal is in conflict with Sections A and F of PLU 1.2.1. Therefore, this proposal is inconsistent with the needs and values of our community as explicitly stated in the Montgomery County 2025 Handbook, which I would actually like to thank Supervisor Mary Biggs for, for being of. Thirdly, although there may be a few homes without access to an available broadband option, there are several existing options for most of the Reiner community, such as Hugh Nets, Shintel, Citizens, and ViaSat. And Verizon's lawyer already said that this is for existing customers. This is not for new customers. And by next year, our entire community is expected to have access to high-speed internet through Starlink, an advanced, high-speed but low-cost internet provider that does not require the construction of towers on resource stewardship land or any other land in our community. Does that mean I should stop? Or, okay, I apologize for the.
That's all right.
For the overrun here. Overrun here.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Again, we don't have anybody else signed up for this hearing, but if you would like to speak, you're welcome to come up, state your name, address, and you would have four minutes. Seeing no one else come up, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Next up, we have public address. We have one person signed up for public address, and that is Judy Atkinson. And if you wouldn't, when you come up, Judy, if you'll go ahead, state your name and address. And you have four minutes.
My name is Judy Atkinson. I live at 2901 Forge Road. I heard the VDOT man speak that he would be checking in on this. But I just wanted to give you my point of view. In February, they were replacing culverts on Allegheny Spring Road, which Forge Road joins. I went down and spoke with one of the supervisors down there, Larry Weeks, and asked him what I could do about getting the potholes fixed on my road. He gave me the advice to call Richmond. I did so and spoke with the lady there, and she was very nice. And so when we got through talking, she told me, she gave me the number to look it up on the internet and told me to give them a couple of weeks. I did. And of course, it said they would turn it over to the local VDOT. And I never heard anything else. So when they did finish the project of putting the new culverts in on Allegheny Spring Road, they did bring some asphalt up there, but they did not put it in the holes. They just, I guess, spread it out so they wouldn't have to take it back wherever they got it. So I would like your help in trying to get them down there, just to replace, just to fix the potholes. I mean, it's just, there's no way to avoid them on that part of the road. And my husband did, my deceased husband did, put the pavement in there. I think it's about, what, 75 foot deep, maybe? And then VDOT came and put down tar and gravels to follow on down to Allegheny Spring Road. So I would really like your help with this, really, really. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to come forward on public address? Please just state your name and your address, and you have four minutes.
Sorry. My name is Sue Cass. I live at 2805 Mount Vernon Lane in Blacksburg. I've come to speak today not as a, the most recently elected school board member, but instead as a former teacher and as a county resident. I think it's wonderful that you have decided to provide stipends and retroactive increases to your county employees. I was surprised when I heard about it while watching the meeting, because no conversation had really been had with MCPS regarding those types of increases. And although I know that MCS, MCPS employees are not truly county employees, I think a lot of people do consider them as county employees, because they provide a service to our county. I think that they provide an enormous service to our county residents throughout the pandemic. And I've been told by many people during board meetings and outside of board meetings that our staff are considered essential workers, that without them, our county residents wouldn't be able to get back to work, that our businesses wouldn't be able to operate, because people wouldn't be able to work there. And I think that if we are going to consider our staff as essential workers and necessary to be out there to help our economy, they're obviously an important part of our economy, that we should, that the county should help in providing funding for those increases. Just looking down at my notes here. I know that without them returning the work, many of our county residents would have difficulty. And I said that part already. But our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our aides, they provide an important service during the summertime. They put themselves into precarious situation day after day, just to help our students and their families. I even rode on one of the buses to see what they did. I think it's important that all of our staff, just like yours, have gone above and beyond the expectations of their jobs. I'm afraid that, we've had a recruiting crisis for qualified teachers, for qualified staff. And I'm afraid that if we don't recognize them, especially after it's been publicized that other county employees are getting increases, that not, we may lose employees, but also it sends a message that they're not as valued as much as others in our county. So I know that Dr. Meyer will be speaking tonight, and I hope that you'll strongly consider helping MCPS support our public servants as much as the other public servants that you're supporting with increases. And I hope that you will consider Dr. Meyer's recommendation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. Addendum.
We actually do have two items for the addendum tonight, Mr. Chair. We have an addendum to add to consent agenda, a memorandum of understanding by and between the County of Montgomery and the Radford Army Ammunition Plant. And we also have an addendum to new business, and that is a resolution of recognition for Carol Edmonds, Deputy County Administrator.
Okay, we need to take a vote on that, don't we, Marty?
One to consent and one to new business, yep.
Is there, is there a motion?
No.
Second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, since we are adding the addendum for the Radford Army Ammunition Plant, just want to specify that that's for a mutual aid agreement.
Mutual aid agreement for response.
Since we're not going to be voting on that as a new business item.
That's correct.
I think that's important.
That is an administrative matter approving a mutual aid agreement. You are correct.
For emergency response.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good point, good point. Anyone else? Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Jeffrey Zikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is items of consent. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Jeffrey Zikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is go into work session. Is there a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call a roll. Please.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Jeffrey Zikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, we are into work session.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. This work session this evening is a follow-up to the board's work session from last Monday night, related to a discussion of funding, using, funding from the county's CARES Act funds to provide funding for supplemental pay adjustments from Montgomery County Public School employees. If you recall, last Monday night in the work session, there was a consensus to move forward with a recommendation of a half million dollars of county CARES Act funds for supplemental funding to MCPS. We later learned, we actually had competing meetings that night. We had our work session, the Montgomery County Public School Board also had a meeting that same night. We learned after the work session that the schools were requesting a million dollars in CARES Act funding. So instead of having on new business tonight and an item approving the half million dollars that the board had agreed to by consensus, we moved forward with including a work session to revisit this issue. And at this time, I'm going to recognize Angie Hill, our Finance Director, to provide a brief update to the information that's been shared with you previously. Then it's my understanding that Dr. Meyer has a presentation from the public schools. So Angie.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is not in your board docs yet, but I think he's going to put that in later this evening or in the morning. And some of you can probably recite what I'm going to tell you in part of this, because you've heard it a few times. But we just wanted to go over it one more time to make sure that everyone was on.
Angie, can you pull that mic down just a little bit more?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Want me to stand closer?
Start yelling.
How's that? Holler. I'm going to do this. Okay. People don't accuse me of being quiet usually. But we wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page with what's behind this. CARES Act, as far as the county is concerned. So as you know, the CARES Act was signed into federal law in March of 2020. Virginia received $3.1 billion. $1.3 billion of that was distributed to Virginia cities and counties. And Montgomery County received a total of $17 million in two allocations. And these are coronavirus relief funds. There are different types of funds under the CARES Act, but that's this type of fund. This is a new slide that you haven't seen before, but I just wanted to include this. We felt like it was important to give a little bit of background about how we divided the funds, which we have talked about before. But with each allocation, we got memorandums from the Secretary of Finance, Aubrey Lane, from the state of Virginia, that indicated that counties who receive these funds were required to distribute them in an equitable manner to the towns that are located within the jurisdiction. In order to do that, I met with the finance directors from the two towns, and we determined what our recommendation was. And that was approved by our administrators and town managers. So of the $17 million, what we did first was, we took 25% of that and set it aside for the task force and their future needs. The task force covers, the Montgomery County Task Force covers the county and the two towns for public health response needs. So we, we set that aside since it covered all three of us. The balance of that was $12.9 million. And we allocated that, as you can see, and it was based on a formula of population. One component was the same population number that the CARES Act funds were distributed based on. And then we also considered school age population in each of those jurisdictions. So that's the breakdown. Montgomery County ended up with $4.9 million. This slide changes every time I come talk to you, because we continue to go through and figure out what we can do with our CARES funds. Our main goal with our CARES funds has been to provide safety for our employees, which will allow our government to continue, that we can continue operations, and also to provide other services to them during this pandemic. And so that's been our focus with this. Previously, the slide heading said CARES estimated county expenses through December 30th. That's the last day that we have to receive goods or services under the Act, which I'm sure you guys know, because I have said that several times. These are actual, these change so frequently that I can't truly predict what they are through December 30th. And this number has changed since I was here two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago when we talked about this on October 26, I believe. But I've changed the wording. This is what we know right now, but people are still working on this. We're still evaluating the HVAC systems in the buildings, making sure that those are, any improvements are made that need to be made to help protect us from the virus. And just continue some other projects that are underway. Make sure our IT systems are robust and secure for teleworking and that kind of thing. The two main, well, there are actually three items that are on this list that have changed since last time. We did include the hazard pay for sworn law enforcement of $342,000, which you approved previously. And then about midway down the page, evaluate and improve air quality in all county facilities. I had spoken with you before, and we have a contractor who's looking at all the HVAC units in the county-owned buildings. And one recommendation that they have made for all of the buildings is to use bipolar.
Bipolar ionization. Ionization.
Sometimes I say the wrong word, but that's what it is, bipolar ionization. And they have recommended that we do that in all of the buildings. Really early on, when we talked about this, there was some talk about UV lighting used for this kind of thing. But they've studied this. We know more than we did then. And that is the best use or best improvement that can be made. And that's going to be made in the courthouse, the government center, the whole entire government center, including the school section, the Health and Human Services Building, the Public Safety Building, and the jail. And the libraries as well. All of the libraries that the buildings belong to us. So the final item on this is teleworking. It went up since the last report by about $50,000. And again, that's just to make sure that people have the equipment that they need if they need to telework, and also that our systems are secure. So the total allocation that the county received is $4.9 million. The estimate of expenses, which is through the end of October, is $3.7 million. Our estimated grant expenses haven't really changed since the last presentation. That's around $400,000, which leaves an estimated amount that we can allocate in the future of about $800,000. That's all I have.
Okay, well, I'm sure we've got questions. Supervisor Shepard, would you like to start?
I'll pass. I'll wait.
Supervisor Demonts?
I'm going back to slide number three. Just to clarify, because I think, sorry, I wasn't speaking into the mic. I watched the school board meeting, and I think that there was some confusion about what we were required to do with that money when it came to us. And so what I've heard is that we were required, upon receiving that money, we were required to allocate a certain percentage of the town.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And that was based on a formula that we loosely followed, and then also added in school age children as a factor in our formula.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then slide number five. Just making sure I got this correct. So the air quality was jail, the courthouse, social services?
Right, that's the Health and Human Services Building. So it has social services, the Health Department, and our Human Services Department.
Government Center, including the whole facility here, and then all of our own libraries. What about the Animal Care and Adoption Center?
I think that we didn't need, I'm not 100% sure about that. But I think we didn't need to put it in there, because that building is so new that it did not need that.
Okay.
I will find out and let you know for sure.
I actually, I actually think I know part of the answer to that. When we built the Animal Care and Adoption Center, one of the things that.
When we built the Animal Care and Adoption Center, one of the things that made it expensive is we have to have very frequent air turnover in that building. So it already meets the requirements.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I didn't even think about it from that perspective, but yeah, from a smell perspective, that makes sense.
That was one of the things that drove the cost up, yes.
Um, and then, so we are still sitting at $410,000 for our portion of the grant expenses. And that's, I'm sorry, that's slide number six. And that's a combination of the small business recovery grants, the nonprofit recovery grants, and the outdoor dining expansion grants.
And the childcare center grants, yes.
And so we're at 410, and it's reasonable to assume that the towns have much larger grant-related expenses.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Angie. Good to see you again.
All right, for a second showing, Supervisor Shepard.
So we discussed the money left over that the task force may have left over comes back, correct?
That is correct. The task force has, they're looking at some new initiatives that I don't know all of the details of. They're not, they think that they might spend all of their money. They might have some leftover, but they feel like they have some projects underway, some food initiative projects that might come to fruition before the end of December. Probably not in November, that's a little quick, but in December so that we can make sure that, that the food situation in the county is adequate.
Okay. So what about the towns, Christiansburg and Blacksburg? If they have money left over, and is there any idea if they will?
I asked them, they don't think that they're going to have any leftover.
Okay. That's all I have.
Supervisor King.
These estimates that we have here, now that is, is that including the money that we already ordered things waiting to receive?
If we've ordered them, that's part of the reason this is hard, to get this number.
Right.
If we ordered major items that were on a purchase order, they are included. As of, if, purchase orders as of today are included in these numbers. But for smaller kinds of things that people are purchasing, some sanitation supplies and that kind of thing, if they're less than $5,000, they might not be included. But the large items that have already been ordered are included in this.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Blevins.
Supervisor Demonts asked a lot of my questions, but going back up to page three, slides three, again, just to make sure that the reason the CARES Act came down and that the, the county was required, mandated basically, to share those funds, equally distribute those to the towns is because of the hard hit economic, because of sales tax and all, devastating basically Blacksburg and Christiansburg.
Right. And the state did not provide any funding directly to the towns for that, so they distributed it through the county.
Right. And that's why, because their loss of income because of the sales tax. I just wanted to make sure that was, making sure that. And then, again, the Social Service Department that Mr. Demonts got, that was correct. And then on these, going back up and just a comment on the hazard pay for our sworn law enforcement, that was something that CARES Act money was one of the categories or something that they would cover because of the first, because they are first responders. And we, we've already had this discussion and approved it, but because they are out with the public answering their calls, whether there's COVID there or not, and, and CARES said that they could, that was one of the categories.
Yes, that is one of the categories. First responders are what is specifically addressed in the CARES Act. We still don't have guidance. I tell you that every time that I come here too. We still don't have guidance. Now they think that the guidance is going to come out at the end of November about. And so it might be more lenient or it might be more strict. But right now with the guidance, we can only be comfortable with giving hazard pay for sworn law enforcement. That, that is not the county's definition of what hazard pay is, but that's the CARES Act definition.
Very good. And then, so it looks like we will have maybe without, as far as you know, estimated a little over 800,000.
I think it will still be less than that because there are things that I don't know are coming through. And if more come for the HVAC, for example, there, we might not have that much left. But at this point, that's how much we have, yes.
If that comes through, what are you estimating that at? Do you have a number?
I don't have a number for that yet.
And ahead, and the wireless on wheels, those were, we have all 20 units and they're distributed throughout the county. And that was a big concern to help students with Chromebooks and being able to have internet to help them as well.
Are they all distributed?
I don't believe they're all distributed just yet. I've asked Brian to give me another update. We, I think 17 of the 20 are distributed and set up. Yes, ma'am.
That's pretty good. All right. And I had one more and I've lost my train of thought. So if you want to go to somebody else while I try to think of my question.
We're doing a lot of circling back tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, so a lot of my questions have been answered, but I just sort of wanted to get straight here. All right, so right now, we have this 800,000 plus, but we don't know what else might come out of it. So last time we talked about $500,000. Is there something between the two that, that you think would be worthy of trying to estimate right now?
Oh, between the 800 and if, and if we used 500, as you discussed at the last meeting, I feel like we do have enough items that would be eligible to come from, to spend that amount of money. We wouldn't necessarily have to, but for example, if a big testing breakthrough comes or a big vaccination, which I don't anticipate, that's, I shouldn't say that, I don't know. No one knows. But if something big came out before December, we would want to be able to pay for that. If we didn't have this CARES funding, we would have to pay for it with a different source.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bone.
Could you, slide five is most, most of my questions. Could you explain what COVID leave and eligible personnel is?
Yes. If you recall, you approved, well, the federal government required that we have employee-paid sick leave that covered employees who either had COVID or had to care for someone with COVID or if they had a child that could not go to school or daycare because of a COVID-related issue. The board approved that we pay, provide up to 12 weeks of pay for employees who needed this type of leave, and that's how much we've paid to date.
Do we expect to spend more in that category?
Well, it depends on if there's an, if there's a big outbreak, if.
How many employees have taken advantage of that?
When the county closed for two weeks, quite a few of them did. But people who were able to work from home didn't have to use that type of leave. And because we now have so much better remote working capabilities, I think the number would be less.
So as you were describing this page, you said that there are ongoing HVAC system evaluations and IT systems' robustness, or perhaps, I'm not quite sure if I got everything.
We're losing you.
You did say something like HV, ongoing HVAC evaluations and ongoing IT evaluations that aren't represented in these numbers.
There could be HVAC. I have not spoken with Scott Woodrum in the past few days to know where they are with that, if they're totally finished or not. I know that they have done the, taken the first step. I don't know if he needs to do anything else or if that's complete. I think that the technology will continue to come through, will continue to have some expenses for that. I know that there's some items that are coming through that are not terribly significant for the sheriff's office. One that was requested recently was related to breathalyzers. And when breathalyzers are, I don't know if that's the exact correct term.
It's close enough.
Okay. Everyone knows what that means, right? So when they're administered, the deputies need to be able to not be in the line of that, of the person that is blowing into the breathalyzer. So there's something that we can purchase that will help protect them. So there are items like that that could come through that people request that are truly needed, that will protect our employees and protect the public and let us be able to continue our services that are difficult to predict.
Okay. So as you were answering Supervisor Biggs's question and you mentioned testing, and obviously, we, none of us know if any kind of vaccine is going, or better testing equipment for COVID or what's going to unfold in the next month and a half. But were you envisioning the 800,000? If we were, all the stars aligned, that all of it would be used? Or just the 313,000 if in fact a vaccine was available and things like that?
I have no idea because I don't know what the cost would be and I don't know how it would get distributed. But I will tell you that right now, the task force is paying for those costs. But if they were to run out of money, then they might need that as well. They might need a portion of our money, whichever source of funding we would need to give them.
Could you explain what VOSH is, V-O-S-H?
Oh, yes. I meant to do that, thank you. It's the Virginia Occupational Safety and Health. And they released standards that we need to follow to make sure that we're keeping ourselves safe. And one of them was that if people rode in vehicles together, they had to have respirator-type mask. We did not full-blown respirators, not even in 95, more than that. We felt like it was more important for us not to use those to save them for the first responders and those kind of people. So we had to buy some extra vehicles to let people drive separately.
And then on slide six, last time you told us that it, if I can recall correctly, all of the grants were pretty much closed except for the childcare grants? And you only had three applications at the time. Do we have more?
No, we do not have more. We might have less. There might, they might, we're still evaluating them, they might not all be qualified.
Are they due on the 15th, I think?
Mm-hmm. They were already due.
Okay. So is the 410,000? Do you have enough applications to make up that 400,000? I know you set it aside.
We do.
But we do.
If, yes.
Okay.
There is one more grant, the dining expansion grant that helps restaurants continue to serve people outdoors. We, the county only has one or two that appear to be located in the county, but that grant just closed, I think it closed today, it was supposed to close yesterday, but the software company that we use for the grant portal had a problem over the weekend, so we extended it that one day. But I don't think we're going to have a significant amount of applicants for that. The towns had more, Blacksburg had definitely the most for that.
Mm-hmm, sure.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To me, I keep, and several members have already asked you about the very last page, the very last number, that 813,000. It just seems like every time we talk about it, there's more unknowns than there are knowns. So the object is, at the end of the year, to have zero. So do we have anything lined up that if we were to be fortunate enough to get to the end and not have to spend all that, that we would have something to spend it on? Or would we send it back to the, to the feds?
I think that we would be able to find expenses that will qualify. And as the further guidance comes out, which I do hope is at the end of the month, I think that will give us clarity, that will allow the auditors and the other people that decide what is eligible or not to determine that there are other items that we can purchase. We are trying, we are not supposed to stockpile items, which we are not doing, but we are buying as sanitizing supplies, PPE types of items as we can. I don't feel like that's stockpiling because we have to have those and they're difficult to come by. So we are buying those as they become available.
Okay. Supervisor Blevins, did you have a?
It was basically a comment about the New River Task Force during the VACO meeting conference today. We, they got a shout out of good, I mean, on the first lines of what they're doing with their money and using the CARES funding for, and so that is great. And not only is it just for testing so that people know that they've done all kinds of awareness and of course the marketing. If you look out, some people are wearing the be committed, be well mask, and that is part of that campaign and where those CARES funds were, were spent. Also awareness and the business, is it the business, I don't.
Business continuity team.
Continuity team, yes. And that's excellent to keep our small businesses. And so many people are struggling to keep those businesses going during this crisis.
Right. And the task force has also hired a liaison that works between the task force and the schools to help them if they need help with any situations that might arise and help them with educating teachers or whoever they need to, to support during this time. So that liaison works between Dr. Bissell and the school system.
Very good. And they mentioned that at the VACO meeting today and how the task force is made up of everyone, government leaders, business leaders, school, the colleges, and so, and of course, police and law enforcement. So I think that's just wonderful that everybody's putting their input of needs and ideas that we can be aware of, of where we can spend those CARES money. Thank you.
Ms. Supervisor Blevins, I would like to give you guys a shout out for that as well because if you recall, when this first started, the task force initially was the brainchild of the two towns in the county. And so we formed that task force first to start addressing needs within the county. But because it was recognized very quickly that that was a very effective model to use, that's how we also evolved into the New River Regional Task Force, which, as you mentioned, got a shout out with VACO today. It's what this board did with your leadership at the beginning of this pandemic was a model for the rest of the state.
Any other questions come to mind? And since we're talking about the task force, the vehicles that are listed on your sheet here do not reflect the vehicles they bought for us, the emergency services vehicles.
That's correct. It reflects some sheriff's vehicles, but not EMT, not fire and rescue. Right.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it. Don't go far. I think this might be a good opportunity while the station is being sanitized to take us a short break. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break and be back here at. Come on, Glock. Be back here at 8:55.
I'll take a little break.
Take a break. Take a break. Oh, there's so much water you can drink.
That that occurred, that that was part of it. The virtual graduation that we were able to offer to our high school seniors this past May, technology. We had to invest in additional technology to actually deliver instruction as well. Some special education needs, the GEAR grant was not a lot, it's real specific in the spending in terms of that. But so we had these four different sources that all have different strings attached to them and how you can or cannot spend them. So we were looking to give our employees a $2,000 bonus. And here's how we were going to do that. First, we had over $2 million in carryover. We're going to use half of that actually for that stipend. In fact, we really, what we really need you all to do, we need you all to vote to change the category in that for us so we can use it for the stipends currently in operations or what category, it needs to go for one. It needs to get to the instructional category is what it needs to do and it needs y'all's action to actually do that. And then second, the county CRF, we were approached a few weeks ago by your folks, had a conversation with, mostly with Tommy. And I'm glad of the great relationship that Tommy and Angie and Carol have built. And they talk constantly and all the time and I think that's a great thing. But you guys approached us and said, hey, we're going to have additional funding left and do you need it? And of course, you know, our answer is obviously, yeah, we do need it. But the amount kept going down as the discussions seemed to go on. I mean, you know, at one point I heard as much as 1.8 million, then I heard 1.3. I think after y'all's meeting two weeks ago, went down to 1 million. So we actually, that's, so we, basically, we thought it was a formality that we were working with you guys and that we were going to use the rest of your cares money. So that's why this amount was requested. The last part is our CRF money. And basically it'd be a reimbursement of FY '20 because the CRF is allowing us to go back to FY '20 to reimburse things that we bought at the end of the school year, which then frees up general fund, which becomes sort of like a carryover from the year '20. So basically, we're using new money to be able to do this. You know, one thing, most of this I share with the board. I tweaked it a little based on what your questions were last week. One, one thing here is the board had a lot of interest in, well, if we do this, do we have money, enough money left over to do what we need to do as we move forward? And so what I'm showing here is if you, basically, we have the remainder of the carryover, it's a little over a million dollars. The 10 positions not used, this can either carry over into next year through ADM and help with our ADM issue that we may have. That total is 1.7 million. Basically, we're looking at about 1.7 million dollars in loss based on having 300 fewer students in ADM this year. So we've got the money right there between those two sources to cover for that ADM. Now, the good news may be that we're hearing and we feel it's going to pass and we're hearing that they're going to hold us harmless this year and that 1.7 would then become carryover, but we don't know that till they actually, the governor signs off on it and there's some finalization of that. So we don't want to spend that money knowing that we might need it to cover the loss in attendance, okay? And then the remaining funding, we have about 952,000 in CARES Act. We have about 750 in estimated expenses for the remainder of this year that we need to purchase. Our biggest purchase right now that's out there is we're buying dividers for, if we get more students back in possibly, we're buying dividers that will actually go on desks in case they have to be within a six feet range of each other. So that's probably our biggest. But we still, you know, of course, Tommy can tell you everything we stocked up on. We've got thousands of gallons worth of Hennepin titles and all kinds of other things that were needed and they've done a good job at stocking up. The COVID merit stipend details, we have 1,287 full-time employees and 385 part-time who are contracted. And basically, these employees who were employed or hired FY '20 and are still employed as of November 2nd, we've said they will receive the $2,000 bonus. Full and part-time contracted employees who were hired this year would receive 1,000. If an employee elected not to work during COVID, they would not be eligible for the stipend. And what I mean by that is this, we had, we had several employees when we closed on March 13th that said, I don't want to be reassigned. Because what ended up happening was our bus drivers, our aides and our food service workers, they were basically reassigned to lunch delivery, all right? Aides got on buses, buses took routes that, you know, to actually just deliver lunches. We had, we have several employees, mostly aides, who said, no, I don't want to be, I just wanted to work in the classroom. I don't want to deliver food. We didn't make them do it. But, but at this point too, we're not going to offer them that bonus either. So, so that would be a group that would not receive it. Substitutes are not eligible. Employees hired after November 2nd will not be eligible either. We had to figure setting a cutoff date as for who is working now. We were hoping to pay this by November 20th, you know? We were, like I said, we thought the, your money was a formality. I learned last week that it was not. Our part-time employees, you all had some questions last week about our part-time employees and who they actually are. And, and I've listed here who they are and the hours that most of them work. You can see 35 to 40 are mostly aides, 30 to 35 are mostly school nutrition and aides, 25, 30 also nutrition and aides, 20 to 25 are mostly bus drivers. We have a few that are under 20 that are mostly aides and then a half-time teachers. A half-time teacher is a 17 and a half hour employee, okay? And so they teach half a day for us. We don't, we really only have maybe a couple, two or three of those, I believe. So, so anyway, but the most, you know, of course, the bus drivers, that 20, 25 hours does not really say what they've been doing. I mean, our bus drivers, they've gone from four routes a day to eight routes a day. They're working more than four days than they did in five days last year. What they've done is absolutely amazing. And I mean, they're just basically going all day long. They really are. And they don't get many breaks, but they've really stepped up to the challenge and done an excellent job at transporting our, our students. You all had some questions last week about why full stipends for part-time employees. Our bus driver, and we talked about this summer, bus driver, aides, food service continue to report to deliver meals, even through the summer, most of them did. Many continued throughout the summer, they contributed just as much as our full-time employees did. They just did. I mean, they provided a huge service. They delivered since last March 16th until the end of August, we fed over 655,000 meals to the students in this county. That's absolutely amazing. And even now, food service, they do not just stand behind the counter and give out food anymore. They've got to pack every, all the bags. They have to redo them in a different way. They have to hand them out, kids coming in and out the door. They have to deliver them to classrooms. I mean, what they have done is just, is just absolutely incredible. It really is. They distributed over 2,000 library books to students during, during this time, transported Chromebooks, our bus drivers said eight hours instead of four. Everyone in our school division's jobs has changed dramatically. It's just totally different, everyone. I mean, there's not one employee who has a different job, has a different kind of job than what they did last year. And it's hard to explain what folks have happened and been doing. Our teachers, I mean, they have, what they have done is absolutely amazing. They've totally flipped their instructional methods to make sure that our employees continue to get, I mean, our students continue to get an education. You know, what our folks are doing is absolutely amazing. You guys have recognized us throughout the summer. I know the community has recognized us and what we have, what our folks have done. I think, I think our schools have held this community together in a way that, that it was just basically unimaginable. We've got absolutely just wonderful people who are doing absolutely wonderful things. You know, our employees too, had direct interaction with the community and the public every day. We have thousands of students still coming to our schools every day in our buildings. There's a lot of direct contact and they are, I think they're on the front lines. I mean, they really, really are. What questions do you have for me? Tommy can give you some specific numbers if you want to get into some specific.
I'm sure we got questions.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
We'll start around the room. Supervisor Blevins, can we start with you?
All right, so let me, so the 2,000 stipend would be for, as you explained, everyone, including the contract, contracted workers?
It would be all, everyone, every, our division in schools, everyone receives a contract who is an employee with us every single year. So anyone who has a contract, substitutes don't get contracts. Bus drivers, aides, food service get contracts, teachers, administration, that kind of thing. They actually get a new contract every year. So anyone who received a contract would get the stipend, correct?
All right, and 2,000 for, for all of them except for the exemptions that you've just went over?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the carryover from '20 about to help pay for the stipends, you say it's, you've got a million, a little over a million there, and then you have an additional a million carryover that you're looking that would help? No, no, I'm not.
Yeah.
You'll have additional about a million and some carryover as well, correct?
Right, which would protect us against the ADM losses that we were holding. Then we had that 2 million and in fact, we got it approved from you when we brought it to you. We had 2 million in carryover and we usually don't do this. Usually we designate projects to that money that we have carryover. We didn't do that this year. We basically said, okay, let's hold on to the 2 million, see what we may need it for this year. And you all agree with that? Am I saying that correctly? Okay. And so we, we did not designate that 2 million dollars. So we would like to take a million of that still, you know, and then hold on to the million that in case the ADM loss at the, at the end of the year doesn't go through.
And then the 700,000, I'm just making sure I understand, the 700,000 were for the 10 full-time positions that did not happen because of COVID but were originally approved or in your budget originally. Would there be any additional funds since those? Did you calculate retirement benefits or anything? Would there be any extra money because of those 10 positions not hired? Did you count into that budget if you were going to hire 10 new persons VRS and benefits? Calculate it?
We, yeah, we, you know, we look at positions and usually in terms of teachers, $70,000 a teacher, but of course, teachers do not start at $70,000. That includes their benefits and that kind of thing. So it's already, already in that piece.
Okay, that's good. I was trying to see, you know, making sure that was included in that. And then I guess, and I reserve if I can ask some questions later, but I guess one of the issues is formality of thanking the county with the C, with the CARES Act, a formality. We're elected officials, we have to vote on everything.
Sure you do.
Okay, so I'm confused why?
Well, when your folks come to us and say we have money remaining, do you have something you can spend it on? And we start giving your finance department a list of things and then they come back and say, well, you know, do you have more? I think the first thing we give them is $750,000. Then we gave them more things we could reimburse and it kept, it kept on and on and on. And then, I mean, our thought was, okay, this, this, you guys are going to help us out here, that's nice. And we've been wondering if you were going to help us out, you know? That's one thing, you know, I wish we'd have been on the front end of these conversations when the county got the actual COVID money and been able to organize our money with yours and all of it together. And we probably wouldn't be standing here today dealing with this situation, but it's a communication piece, I believe.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay. I think that all for right now, but I will probably want to follow up.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you need to hold that 1.7 up with the ADM. And I will tell you that during VACO conference we're having virtually, that that's a big push by VACO is to push that. And I know, I know Delegate Hurst supports that too, but.
I mean, we're hearing everything positive about that, Ms. Biggs. You know, and I think it's going to work out, but thinking until somebody actually signs a document that, hey, this is good.
Yeah, and just, this is an aside. And the other thing is you're worried about the next year after that. And evidently, that's a worry too, that the General Assembly is going to have to step up and do something if they want to take away money because you've lost students. Because as we all know, it's more expensive during COVID to teach students and to be the school team for students.
Absolutely.
But anyway, that's just an aside, you know how I feel about that. So you're saying right now that you have a million dollars that you could put forward to help?
We have 2.3 million.
Yeah, but you're saying that you want to, all right, tell me about the 2.3.
Okay, we have one, we have 1 million, that 1,038,000 from our carryover. That's half the carryover, so we're using half of that. And then we have three point, I mean, 1.3 million in that CRF funding, all right? And so that CRF funding basically goes back and reimburses anything we spent in '20 that will then free up money, that amount of money to actually be used for the stipend.
Okay, so give me that total again that you have that you could use to get every, you know, you're aiming to do the two.
2.38 is a good rounded number, yeah.
Okay. And so to, if, if you were to give your bonuses, 2,000 to everyone, how, tell me again how much more you need?
1 million, which is what we're requesting from you.
So that hasn't changed, okay, got it. Okay, all right, I'll reserve for later, but that's the basic thing I wanted to know and get out in front of everybody.
Yeah, no problem.
As you know, we met last Monday, the board did after PSA meeting and discussed some of this A, B, and C plan. Sure heard that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm gonna get my glasses on. It says allocate $500,000 in county CARES dollars to Montgomery County Public Schools. Montgomery County Public Schools will contribute the 1.5 million with the funds, means y'all will allocate half a million dollars too. My understanding is that that would take care of the $2,000 stipend for all employees. It would. How do we move up to a million?
Our initial intention was a million from your CRF funding, not to take a half a million of ours. I mean, our, our school board last week voted for a million in your CR. If you look at the letter that was requested, it was, it was a million dollars of your, of your funding, not a half of ours and a half of yours. It was an entire million.
Half a million dollars by reallocating expenses in the school operating fund from the school capital project fund.
I know, I know what you all have voted on and that's why I wish I were there to be able to get some clarity to that conversation. That's all.
Supervisor Shepard.
Relating back to what he just said, where did that come from? Where did that suggestion come from?
It came from your side, came to Tommy. Tommy talked to me.
So you guys did have a hand in making that to bring to us?
Here's what happened. Your side came to Tommy, Tommy came to me. We may have miscommunicated because I wouldn't have said a half a million dollars of our capital money to go to this. I thought you, I thought what was being proposed was either a million was the first choice in your CRF money, or the second choice was a half a million in your CRF and a half a million in your capital, not ours. I would have never, I would have never said that was okay. And I know our school board, and that's not what I presented to our school board last Monday either, because I would have to give that to our school board to be able to make that choice.
I'll have anything else.
So no, uh-uh, that, that is not the case. And to take half a million dollars from our capital, I mean, we have our, our money that has been assigned especially to our garage that we're building and bus area at operations. I mean, that's, that's the money that, most of that's what we need for that project that we know of at this point.
Supervisor Demonts.
Okay, a couple of things. I'm sure you're aware we have capital needs on our side as well. And so we wouldn't have wanted to, like, for the same reasons that you don't want to take money out of your capital fund, we have the exact same concerns on the county's side as well.
Sure, that's why I was surprised when we talked.
Yeah, and so how, and you saw how it was presented to us. What we understood in that meeting was that it was coming out of y'all's capital fund. And so that's kind of where the decision was made on our end, just the consensus to come back tonight. I really don't want to put anybody on the spot, but there seems to be some confusion over the conversations that were had in the weeks leading up to this on what was said on the county side and what was said on the school side. And I think it's, I'm not sure Craig, if you should answer that or if Ms. Hill should be answering that, but I think it would help a lot if we had some clarity on what those discussions were that started this whole process.
Sure, I'll be glad to, sorry, allergies. I'll be glad to start that conversation and then ask Angie to clarify. As you know, as we've had conversations with the board over the last couple of months, our intent as a staff is to ensure that by December 30th, all the CARES money is expended. We have no desire to turn any money back in to the state, which then goes back to the federal government. As a result of those conversations, we've reached out to a number of agencies, schools included, to ask what is out there that may be eligible? What are things that may be eligible for concern? My understanding, and I have not been a direct part of those conversations, that's involved Carol, Angie, and Tommy, is there were discussions about what may possibly be eligible for funding. We have continued to have those discussions about what items may be eligible. However, as Supervisor Blevins made extremely clear, at no point, and I'll ask Angie to verify that, but at no point have we ever said to any agency, schools or otherwise, that we will give you X dollars of funding if it required board approval. We don't do that. Anything more to add to that? Please, yeah, it needs to be. No, you gotta talk. No, yeah, you'll be fine.
Just holler.
Okay, I'll yell. We did, Tommy and Carol and I had a lot of conversations and we said we might have money left over, we might have money left over. And we talked several times, I don't even know how many, a lot, as we said. And Tommy brought forth numbers and I said, do you have more? I did not mean to, and I don't believe that I did imply that we had more to give. He said, how much do you want? And I said, how many CARES eligible dollars do you have? As Craig said, we've asked a lot of people that and I certainly would never, never commit this board to anything. I don't have authority to do that. I, I did not say we are committing to any of that. And I think that it's similar to the state. We don't know what's going to happen until the elected body votes. I would never, ever do that. And we did, the number that they ended up with was 1.8 that they showed us that was eligible, but I never said we had a million eight left for certain to spend because as the chair has said, things change, things are, they progress, we find new needs that we didn't know we had. So that's my perspective of our conversations.
And if I can just add to that as well.
Don't leave Angie.
As, as we discussed last Monday night, we are going to work hard to continue to make sure that we spend those funds down to zero by the end of the year. In order to do that, we're going to continue to ask those questions. I lost what I was going to point out there, but it'll come back. Go ahead.
So with the 500 capital situation, is that just simply a miscommunication then?
I assume it is because I thought that Carol and Tommy and I understood that it would come out of the school's capital. That's what I felt like was communicated, yes.
Okay, I think that's all I've got for you.
Mr. Demonts, can I clarify for the school, just real quickly? I mean, what Angie says is right. At no time did they come to me and say, we have X amount of dollars. This started with, would we be interested in CARES Act? Did we have a need? Right now, today, we've got a little over 200,000 left to spend and that's it. And that's through whatever time period we go. And we started with well in excess of 3.5 million dollars. So when they approached the school system, we said, yes, we would be interested to see if we could marry it up. We started off at a quarter, at three quarters of a million dollars. Again, no promises were made, okay? We then grew it to 1.34 million and then it went to 1.805 million. After that, before y'all's meeting, they came up with the A, B, and C, as I called it, because that's how they referred to it as us. Obviously, as a school system, we would prefer the million dollars cash. The B would have been taking money that had been expended in the operating fund, move it to the capital fund, thereby freeing up a half million dollars in the general purpose fund that then could be used somewhere else. Kind of like the million dollars, the 1.345 million, that's FY '20, since those books are closed, when we get reimbursed for those, which the county has looked at our schedule and has agreed on all the things we've got, because there's been some things we've not had disagreements, but you're in the gray areas and we've taken those off. That comes in '21, it's new money. It can be used for any purpose. What's been spent in '21 for us as the district, we've taken out of our '21 budget. Because every PL we've had, we've had to have dollars to take care of. So we've got over 2 million dollars that has gone against our '21 budget that has to be replenished somewhere, or I'm going to run out of money by the end of the school year. So what Angie said, what Craig said, exactly right. Once, you know, we were running at 500, and that's, I'm not trying to give an excuse, but I think that because we were running so fast trying to get ready for meetings, that that's where the miscommunication between A, you know, and we said, I told Angie and Carol, we could live with A or B. I think there was some miscommunication and I'll take the heat for it. As a system, we would prefer the million dollars. If we go the route of operating to capital, the concern would be, we don't know yet what that operating center is going to cost. You know, we're completing our design drawings right now, which will let us do a better budget on the garage and the parking lot. Y'all graciously back in August put 1.4 million and some change into that account. If we tap that, the concern is then we don't have enough to complete, you know, the conversion. So that's what our concern as a district is, is that if we take a half million, basically a capital, that we won't have sufficient funds when it comes time to complete the garage. But Angie and Craig were exactly right and I want to make sure that record's set straight.
I appreciate that a lot, thank you. I think that, I mean, you guys have watched our meeting, I've watched your meeting. I think it's very clear that this board and your board want to do the stipends, it's just getting to the point of the funding for them. And so I'm looking, I mean, we all seemed very pro giving the stipends at our last meeting, I think. And so I think we're just kind of nailing down, like, where are these dollars exactly going to come from? Craig, is this a decision that we are making tonight? What is the?
We can if we want to.
It's at the pleasure of the board, yes, ma'am.
And I am looking to you guys, you guys would like for us to make this decision tonight.
Yes, we would. In fact, I mean, you know, one thing we definitely need is categorical change for the, for our money.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The remaining money, we have, we have calculated, and of course, this is going to be up to the school board, because the school board's already voted on requesting a million. So I have to go back to the school board for anything under a million that we get, but what we've estimated is for every 500,000, it's about $250 off the $2,000 stipend, so.
Did you present anything other than the county would give a million to the school board? Okay, so we don't know any kind of gauge of how they might feel about other options?
No, anybody who like to, wants to, we've got three members here, anybody who would like to speak on behalf of the entire board, but.
I don't think they can.
We'd have to have a discussion with the board to know that, yep.
Okay.
Then that would change, if we don't have a letter from them requesting it, we couldn't vote on a lesser amount?
Or could we?
You can, you can put a motion on the floor to approve whatever dollar amount the board is comfortable with.
Okay, I thought there was some kind. Okay, I, I thought there was some kind of a hangup over a letter that we had to have it in writing, but okay.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, y'all voted on lesser amounts before, with budgets and everything else, and so, um, yeah.
I just want to, I would, I would, ideally, and then I'll see the floor, at least temporarily. Ideally, I would, Steve, I would like to make this decision tonight because I, I would like to get that question answered for the schools. So if we can get to a point tonight, that would be my preference on how we're going to get there. Because I think we've made it clear that we want to get there.
I don't think you're the only one. Vice Chair Bone, do you have some questions?
Yes, could you go back to the slide that had the part-time individuals? It started with aides and it was 35 to 40 hours? That one? So I just want clarification on this one. So to me, that first bullet, 13 who are 35 to 40 hours, is full-time. You might call them part-time, but that's full-time to me. The 153 who are 30 to 35 hours, are all of those 153 working more than 30, 35 hours right now a week?
Right now, no. But what I would say is a lot of those individuals work during the summertime, which are usually non-contracted time.
Okay.
That's that extra effort that they put in, I would say.
And so what's the difference between the 153 and the 76?
We have different employees with different needs that need it for different hours. You know, when it comes to the stipend, I don't really see a difference because all of them put in the extra time this summer, or most of them did, and, and have been doing their jobs differently than what they used to do by far.
And then the 114 who are 20 to 25 hours, mostly bus drivers, are now doing 36 hours or so.
Yeah, bus drivers are, their contract's four and a quarter hours a day, which equals.
A little over 22 hours.
About over 22. Now they're at how many hours?
They're running generally anywhere between eight to nine hours a day, so I'm running 32 to 36 hours.
And then the 29 who are 20 hours or less, halftime teachers, uh, what kind of hours are they working now?
Halftime teachers, halftime would be 17 and a half hours. Teachers, 35 hours.
And so why do they deserve the same kind of stipend that full-time teachers?
For one, they've, they've also had to change their instructional mode. You know, halftime teacher versus a full-time, to be quite honest with you, sometimes not a lot of difference because you plan for a class. And whether it's one class or a class all day, they still have to plan for that class. And planning for that class is where the work really happens. So they're having to spend a ton more time planning for their class. They, if they were to be there all day, then they could teach it all day too. But it's about the things that they're doing different right now compared to the remainder of our employees, or to what they used to do, rather, excuse me.
So just adding all the numbers. That's 385. Mr. Krantz, you and I were talking during the break and, um, we were talking about the other 70. Yes, 305 were, were working a lot of time, but then there were 70 who might be considered part-time. Could you speak to that, please?
You've got, I mean, it's various positions on the sheet. So you've got administrative aides are 13, early literacy aides of 10, in-school supervision, 10 of 8. And then it's different. I've got support service workers hourly of four, support service workers of four. It's a little bit of everything. If I take the ones that are any kind of significant numbers of the 385, 307 make up cafeteria, school site aides, bus drivers, bus driver aides, and then support aides. And that represents 80% of the 385.
So as we talked during the break, the extra, um, it's actually 78. You know, an extra $1,000 for 78 is $78,000. That's a lot of money that, that, if, in fact, those people aren't working full-time-ish, I'm not quite sure how I can get there.
Okay, well.
If you could talk me through that, I mean, I'm really trying to understand.
Well, again, their, their jobs have changed. It's different. They might not spend as much time in the school, but they're spending a lot more time outside of classrooms, preparing, you know, preparing and for their classes, especially the teachers. You know, at the end of the day, you know, it, it, it comes down to some equity and fairness issues and just, you know, and, and start picking apart who's, because we have so many part, considered part-time employees, you know? And so, you know, it became an equity issue, and, and our, our school board wanted to give all part-time contracted employees the same amount because of the things they had done and how they had stepped up. And so, you know, in the end, it's, it's, it's going to be what the school board wants to do with the money that you all allot us.
Okay. Mr. Meadows, do we, the, the school division is asking us for categorical change for some money to be released? Is that on our agenda to vote on, or do we have to make?
I don't believe that, that wasn't included in the letter. It was included in the letter, okay.
So we have to, it doesn't have to be advertised, does it?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
No, ma'am.
Give me a second. Uh, Mr. Krantz, it, I know I don't like beating a dead horse, but the $500,000 option B, capital projects, Ms. Carol was explaining that money as perhaps you didn't use all the money in past projects. The money was kind of setting aside, and that's where that $500,000 was going to come from. And, uh, and you all said option A or B, or one or two, were okay. Three was definitely not okay. So help me through, maybe I misunderstood what Ms. Carol said.
I can help you through it. Tommy and I miscommunicated on that. I think Tommy understood what you all were talking about, but I didn't understand, stand when he talked to me. We had a hallway conversation that lasted about 30 seconds.
Yeah.
And that's our, that's our fault. We miscommunicated. I, I thought it was your capital that he was talking about, but it was our capital. And so that was a miscommunication on our part. If I'd have known, if I'd have understood that, I'd have taken that to the school board on Monday night with, with the CRF money for option A as well. And so, but I have made contact with the school board since then to let them know what you all have actually, what you all passed last week. And I didn't, I did not feel a desire from our board to use our capital money at all for that.
I, I got it. Yeah, I've got that. I understand that you wrote a letter before your school board voted to send us a request. It was something Mr. King, Supervisor King, said. And it kind of threw a few people on this board in a tizzy because the letter you sent out said, yes, everybody will be getting a stipend.
Nope, that's not what it said. Let me, let me clarify that.
Yeah, please.
I sent an email to my staff, which I am able to do, and I do this very often, to let them know what's coming up on board meetings. The board agenda was going out that day, and the clarity on the board agenda was not there, okay? I clarified what we were, what we were going to be requesting from the school board and the process that it had to go through. I specifically said it had to be approved by our school board and it had to be approved by your board in that email to my faculty and staff. And I communicate with my faculty and staff, they're used to being communicated with. If we, our folks look at our board agendas when we post them. If I'd have posted that agenda item on there showing a $2,000 stipend, even with that email, I had questions about, is this, is this me? Who is this include, that kind of thing? We would, our H R. department would have had hundreds of inquiries between the time it was posted and the following Tuesday night about what does this mean? And so my email to my faculty and my staff said and gave the details of what we were requesting, not what we were promising. And so that is, that is a complete difference. And we communicate, and I communicate with our folks, and I made it real clear. And I heard your conversation last week, and it was obviously clear, it wasn't, it was bits and pieces taken out of that email that I sent to my folks, that it really wasn't read completely by some folks. And, and that's okay, because folks talk and, you know, and if you hear bits and pieces and not the whole story, then, you know. But I talked to my, my board too prior to sending that out. My board knows exactly what was going on when I sent that, that out. I did not do anything without my board's approval. They know exactly what I was doing prior to that as well. And so, um.
I appreciate you explaining that because I, you know, it was hard to understand exactly what was going on, so.
Right, thank you for asking.
I don't, my pleasure. I do not have any other questions. And I personally don't have an issue with, since of your part-time people, 80% at least clearly are really sort of full-time. If you take all of your staff, really, it's less than 5% of your staff that we'd be splitting hairs and taking time to figure out, well, who is only working four hours a week or whatever? So I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't want to beat it to death either, but I can't help but go back to that email. You're absolutely right. You didn't promise anything. But this is what you said. You, as superintendent, will make the request. Where's the risk there? You said that the school board would make a determination. They did. Where's the risk there? Then you said the board of supervisors would have to approve it. And that's where the buck stops. You put us in that hot seat. You can't see that?
No, I communicate with my folks. I'm making the request.
You did, and you didn't promise anything.
Didn't promise a thing.
But there's no risk for the first two levels. It's all on this board. And I think that's what sat.
Well, no, because 2.3 million of it's on our board. Because 2.3 million of that money was our, was our money. So it wasn't all on you, okay? Most of that money was, was on our board, not, not on this, not on this.
If we give you nothing, you can do it all?
No, absolutely not.
Then that doesn't make any sense.
I'm sorry, don't make sense to you.
Yeah, how can it? Because 2.3, you need a million dollars to make it work.
Correct, absolutely.
And you said, I'm going to make the request. My board will, will also make a request, if you want to call it that. And then it falls on the board of supervisors.
Well, you're, you're, you're being a little more dramatic than, than my email.
Because when I read it, that's what I saw.
That's what you felt. Well, I'm sorry you felt that way, but that is not the intent.
Because if I thought, oh, well, the school board will deny that. They'll say, absolutely not, we're not going to do that. But what were the chances of that happening? Zero. That's my point. But let's, let's move on, because we have beat it, we have beat it to death.
And I will continue to inform my, my faculty and staff about what's going on as we move forward. Thank you.
Where is the other half of the 3% raise?
The other half of the 3% raise is the 1.7 million that's going to be lost. Basically, the 3% raise is about 3.5 million for the year, right? And so we're still getting that if there's a home harmless in place, okay? But we don't know that that home harmless is actually going to be given to us. So we can't go back like you guys and give the retroactive raise to our employees. Because we don't know that we're going to be getting it through A D M. because of the home harmless at the end of the school year. Right now, the home harmless is actually in March that they're supposed to release it. We can't wait till March to know if we have that money or not, you know? So we cannot go back and retro our, our folks pay. We may need that additional revenue to make up. And I've showed you the 1.7 that we're holding on to to make sure, hopefully, we can make up the 1.7 if we are not, if the home harmless does not pass.
So the 3% that you gave, is that across the board, or is that?
It's across, it's an average of 3% across the board.
So everybody gets the same 3%?
Yes. It's an average of, like I said, it's an average of 3%. The average comes out of a teacher pay scale that fluctuates tenths of a percent between different steps and that kind of thing.
So everybody does not get the same?
No.
That's correct.
Well, a lot of my questions have to do with the board, and I think that'd probably be more appropriate when we meet in a joint meeting to ask a lot of these questions. But did you or your board ever ask for CARES money or C R F. money from us after we received it from the state?
Did we have any conversations?
Not until we were approached, did we have an interview?
But yet you hold us responsible for not getting up with you?
We didn't know how much you had, to be quite honest. It was just a couple of weeks ago.
Just a few minutes ago, you stated that.
I stated what?
That we should have gotten together.
Absolutely.
After we got the money. But you put it on us again.
Because you have the money. You had the money. We did not know till a couple of weeks ago that you ought to distribute the money to the towns. And you're giving over $4 million to the task force.
That's public record.
You know? Oh, sure, it's public record. But we shouldn't have to go to public records not to communicate across a building either.
Why is it that you chose to work your employees as many hours as you did? Why, why didn't you go to another system?
Another system?
Like full-day school, four days a week?
I remember Mr. Shepherd made that comment. Because we did surveys last summer, and we're doing surveys again right now as we're moving forward. And our teachers and our families chose for students to go four half-days in the surveys as opposed to two full-days twice a week. And then that's what our school board chose. They listened to the parents and, 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 yeah, it, it costs a little bit more money to do four half-days than it does to two full-days. But we listened to our students and our families and our parents, and that's what they wanted. They thought that was the best education for their child. And so that's, that's what we did. And we figured out how to do that.
The money that you used for feeding over the summer, was that that FEMA money? Was that extra money?
Yeah, it was not FEMA money.
Where'd that, where'd that pot come from?
We, under the, the waiver that was granted, that went to basically universal feeding from March 16th to the end of August, we got reimbursed for every meal we gave out from the USDA.
USDA.
So that's federal dollars. And then the same thing has happened because they've extended it past the August 31st. The difference is, is that the nutritional guidelines that were waived now are back in play. So there's a little bit difference when you see the packaging, but it's still the same thing. I give out a meal, then I can get reimbursed. What we're also not allowed, though, is under the summer, under the spring, in the summer, we will bring meals to individuals' houses. Because we're operating schools, I'm not allowed to take a meal to a house. That's just not allowed. If we have, like, remote and virtual, they can come, and we have arrangements at our high schools, and they can pick up meals there, but I'm not allowed by law to get in a bus and bring them there. So that's the things that have changed under the rules. But it's federal dollars.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I've never heard of a, something that started out with us trying to do something good get turned around on us so fast and make us look like bad guys. We know your employees work hard. I lived with one of them. I mean, she is working 36 hours a week, and she doesn't like it. Sorry, honey, if you heard that. It is hard on all of them. It doesn't bother me that you give every one of your employees 2,000, or even 2,500, or whatever you deem fit. It's just that you have seen the same information that we have. We started out thinking, this board here, started out thinking, hey, we can give the school a million dollars. That'll be great. But then, as things rolled in and the bills, just like with you all, just, because on your report here says you've got 483,000 left to CARES money, but Tommy just said, no, it's already down to 200 and something thousand. The same things happened to us, but you're holding us responsible for that.
Holding you responsible for it, how's that?
Do you want a million dollars?
Absolutely.
How, do we have a million dollars?
You, you tell me.
No, we have 823,000 dollars.
In your CARES Act.
In the CARES Act money. That's right.
Correct.
Because we're in the same boat that you're in when it comes to the state. So what it seems to me it boils down to is which group should take the risk? Should it be the county taking the risk and giving you the, all, everything we got left? And then we have to pay whatever happens to us or whatever comes in after the CARES money's gone? Or do you take the risk and take some of your carryover money and then take the risk of the ADM switching? Which you seem pretty confident that it's not, that it's going to be there.
But we don't know. And we don't raise our own revenue in schools. We depend on you, have to come and ask you for the money every year. So we don't know, you, you all have the money. We don't. You know, and so that's, that's, that's the, that's the, that's where we are every year. We have to come to you for that additional money.
And we understand that. And when we started out the year, everything was fine.
And then we.
You all were pleased and we were pleased. Everything was working fine. You had a budget. You have a budget every year. You operate within your budget.
Correct.
Because if you don't, then something's got to get cut.
Sure. But then.
What you give, what you give your employees is entirely up to you.
Right.
Not up to us. All we do is just like you said, we give you money and then you do with it whatever you feel is right.
Correct.
And I think that even at a reduced number, I think that you're going to be able to find whatever money to make that up to do exactly what you want with your employees.
We've looked at it and it won't be $2,000. You know, one thing that sort of backed us in the corner as well is when a couple of weeks ago, you decided to do that for your employees. As soon as you do that, I have my employees who are also considered county employees coming to me saying, wait, look, the county's doing that for them. Why can't, you know, you need to do this for us now. So that's, the actions that you all took a couple of weeks ago, put us in this situation as well. And you know, when you chose to give your folks 2,000, then back pay them since July and we can't back pay them since July also, you know, when, you know, we were very surprised that that happened. And so then we, you know, our teachers come to us and our employees come to us and say, look, the county's doing that for them, you know, aren't we a county employee? Can we get the same amount? You know, and, and that put us in a real tough situation right there.
But they're, if they had paychecks, it doesn't say board of supervisors on it. Does it?
What does it say? Okay.
Yeah, which is not, which is not the board of supervisors.
No, but you're our funding source, you know that.
Absolutely.
And we have been working real hard the last couple of years and I thought built a really good relationship to try to say, hey, how can we make things right? Because eight of the last 10 years, your employees have received bigger raises than our employees, okay? And, and it become, it had become a big sticking point and we didn't want to pit our folks against your folks. Last two years, it, it actually worked out and we had worked really well together. And so, you know, last year's an average of 3.5%, this year was a 3%. Okay, we were getting along fine. All was well, we were trying to work together. And then when, when that, when that piece happened.
We are, we are two separate agencies.
Could we stop for a second and just focus on the stipend?
Okay.
Okay.
We are two separate agencies. We operate in our budget, you operate in your budget. So if you don't have enough to do what you would like to do to match everybody around you. Then you make adjustments.
Yeah, we, we don't have the ability to tax. We, our school boards in Virginia can't have taxes.
You make, you make adjustments, maybe not 2,000, maybe 1750, maybe 1,500.
Well, we will make adjustments, you know, we will have to make adjustments.
As far as I know, that's how it works. If you don't have the money, if you can't get the money, then you have to make adjustments.
And that's what it sounds like what we'll, what we'll be doing.
Anybody else have any follow-up questions? Go ahead.
Can the other people go and then I'll go last?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, I don't really have any questions, but I do have a few comments, okay? And I think, you know, this has been good. Everyone had all this built up. And now, you know, you sort of got it out. But it sort of goes back to the original meeting when I kept saying that we didn't have all our cards on the table. Well, we still don't know what the task force might want. But I think what we need to do is calm down and think about why we're really here. What we're really here to do is to look at the employees, county employees, school employees, that through this challenging time have had to change the way, both sides, if you want to call them sides. I call them, we're a family together here, we're Montgomery County. And our employees provide a service to our citizens. Okay? If we want to make a statement to them by a stipend and say, you know, you guys have gone through some difficult, challenging times and you're still going through it. And we are able to provide for you $2,000. It's not much, but it is, it is something to show how we value you and how we value your service to our citizens. That's what we're here about. I think, and I think I said this before, maybe at the work session, because of COVID, we weren't meeting regularly our quarterly meetings with the school board. One of the things that probably would have happened if we'd been having meetings with the school board, and remember, they don't always have to be quarterly. They can be when we feel like we need to be with them. CARES money. We needed to have an understanding. We understood, we understood from the get-go because Angie and Carol explained to us, okay, here's the money, the counties, which never really happens in Virginia, counties got money that had to distribute to towns, that, that just doesn't happen. But anyway, so we understood that. But you got to think, you know, the schools were trying to understand their CARES money. So I think what we need to do is get past this, think about why we're really here tonight. Is there a way, and I want to ask this question, is there a way that we can provide $2,000 for the school employees and to Supervisor Kings? He brought this up at the work session. He said, well, I can't support anything unless we go back and give $2,000 to our part-time people too. All right, my question is, is there a way to do it? Is there a way to compromise over, I don't know if it might be part of the operating money here in the schools, but we also have carryover money. We've put 2.1 million into parks. I asked for 500,000 for broadband. We have other money. So my question is, I'm not the budget expert here. My question is, is there a way to do this and move forward? And then I would be really, really wanting to repair and our relationship and move it forward to between the schools and the county. It's very important to me. I'm very passionate about it. So my question is, can anyone help? Is this the only thing we have to go by right now? What you gave us before, Plan A, B, and C?
Those were three suggestions. I'm sorry, I'm.
You're fine.
My allergies are getting to, those were three suggestions from staff. There were not, there was not a recommendation because this board had indicated to me that they wanted to have discussion about how to move forward with that. There is, there is a concern Supervisor Biggs that, that obviously our definition of part-time employees in the county is different than the part-time employees for the schools. We have part-time employees that literally only work four, six, 10 hours in certain areas. So I would be concerned for those employees that are full-time, that work 40-plus hours to provide somebody that works four, eight, 10 hours, the same stipend. I think that's a little unbalanced. Now, if the board wants to do that, that's certainly the board's decision. But I think the challenge here is the definition of what constitutes a part-time employee is very different between the county and the county and the public schools.
Okay, and, and that's a valid, I mean, I think I even brought that up at the work session, like, because I knew, and I gave Darrell this example, I knew that they were working more than what we consider part-time. But if we get into the weeds of it, I don't know how we, you know, find resolution, but I just want to know how we can go about doing this. I want to know. We've already got 2,000 for our full-time. Do we have a lot of part-time people that only work four hours?
I'd have to get that information up.
I don't know.
Unless Angie's just walking around with it in her head.
Okay. So your feeling is that, that, that wouldn't be.
I don't think it's an apples and apples comparison.
Because the jobs aren't comparable, I understand that. Okay, so now that we got that out on the floor, is there, how do the rest of you feel? Are you ready to do something tonight?
Just, just one question. How much would it cost to give all your employees $2,000?
3.38 million, what's, what's on the sheet? Well, what was on that? Let me go back and just think on it.
Real quick question, if I may, for Mr. Krantz. Is the, for the raise, for the 3% raise, is that about equivalent to the amount of money?
Yes, ma'am, it's very close. The 3% raise is 3.4, the stipend here is 3.384, it's real close to each other.
Okay, and you have, how much money have you got on hand?
The, if you look there, it's 2.345, if you add the top line and the bottom line.
And that's what, that's just what you got extra or leftover, whatever?
Yes, sir.
So if we was to give you $500,000, you can make that $2,000 happen.
I know. If we, basically, what, and Tommy and I figured out, of course, we'd have to go back and discuss with the school board. For every $500,000 that's dropped, it's about $250 less for an employee. So if 500,000, we could give 1750. Y'all gave us nothing, we could give 1,500.
Okay, what about? I'm just throwing this out there. When you called me last Tuesday and we discussed these 10 positions that you thought you filled, but you said you didn't, right?
We did not.
Right? Wonder if, wonder if you use that $700,000 for one-time stipend?
Right, let me show you that.
And it, it's a recurring funds.
All right, that's right here. That's that $700,000 on that second line.
Right.
And so that $700,000 that we did not use, if you add the top, the carryover, and then the 700,000, that's about the 1.7, that we would need to make up our budget if we did not, if the state doesn't pass the hold harmless.
For this year?
Yes, sir.
But then, I mean, I'm just throwing this out, I'm trying to get the people $2,000.
Okay.
If we use it now and if your ADM does not cooperate with you, which I'm here now Richmond, it's going to work out.
And I am too.
Then you can come back to us and we can work with you. Let's just get these people $2,000.
Yeah, I can ask the school board, I can ask the school, I would have to ask the school board next week to do that, to actually take that 700,000. And, but if we end up at the end and they, something happens, because I mean, we're, you know, we're doing now what y'all accuse me of doing, we're promising something for anybody votes on it at the, you know what I'm saying, at the state level? Because the state level hadn't voted on that yet, so we got to just know that if I go to our, our school board and say, hey, we need, we want to use that $700,000 to supplement whatever you all don't give us. And then if it doesn't work out at the end, and we don't have that, then the board supervisor said, they will make sure they make up for ADM loss.
I know, I said that, these boards, I couldn't talk to them.
I know, that's, that's everybody's decision. Absolutely, I would ask the school board to do that. I could do that.
And, sorry to interrupt you, but it wouldn't, I mean, we've already talked about this board, it's already talked about 500,000. So really, the difference is only 500,000, it's not 700,000, right?
Right, exactly.
I'm, I'm just.
And I, I appreciate where you're coming from with that because it allows us some flexibility, but also retain capital on both sides.
So here's what I'd have to do is this, I would go back to the school board next week and I would say, okay, from what I'm hearing you, you all saying is the board supervisor has given us 500,000. Okay? We need to make up, they suggested we make up the other 500 through this 700.
They didn't, I did.
It's going to be a they, is what, you know, maybe, that's what I need to hear from you, okay? That's what we're talking about. And so then, and then the board supervisors, we would communicate better, a lot better, and he and I too, okay? As we're moving through the year, to make sure that we're not going to get short. But of course, if they come out with, like we think they're going to do and hold us harmless, then we're fine. And we're good. Now, what would have to happen is a school board, if we did this, a school board have to agree on that at, at the end of the day to use that. And so basically what you're giving us will cover 1750 for every employee.
No, they just moved it up to 2,000, what I just said.
It will be 2,000, but our school board has to approve this money, which is in the right category already, to give the other 250. So.
Other 500. Yeah, 250, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, see what I'm saying? For a $2,000 stipend, for every $500,000 taken out, it's about $250 off the 2,000 stipend. So if y'all didn't give us anything, it'd be $1,500 stipends for our employees, okay? 500,000 makes you 1750, another million, I mean, another 500,000 makes it, makes it whole 2,000. So basically, I need to know, I mean, of course, our board can explore other options too, if they want to go to the 2,000 besides this, obviously. But that is a place that it's in the correct category, so if they, you know, if they, they would have to come back to you. Does that make sense? And so, does that make sense, Mr. King?
What'd you say, you already done other scenarios to get to 2,000?
No, no.
I, I can't, you got that mask, I can't.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't, sometimes I don't even know when I got it on and have it off. It's just, it's just part of me, it feels like. So, so basically, if you all gave us 500,000, that would guarantee our employee 1750. If our school board wants to move it to 2,000, then we would have to figure out how to do that and this is an option. I would like to be able to say that our board supervisor will work with us, you know, at, at, at the end of the year, if something does happen and this hold harmless doesn't go through for some reason.
Well, like I said, I can't speak for the whole board.
I know, I know you can't.
And, you know, I do want to elaborate on something. And I know most of you heard me say this. The most important thing we have here in the county and the school system is our employees.
Absolutely.
For somebody to mention that I do not respect our employees, I don't appreciate it.
Well, I don't know.
I do, I do respect our employees. I have fought for them since I've been on this board.
Right. We've had many conversations where you have. I, I did, I did not make that comment, I don't know.
Oh, no, no, not you.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knew it wasn't me that made that comment. Okay, thank you, Mr. King.
I do respect them all.
Okay.
Dr. Meyer, if allotted in your, in the school budget was the 3% raise and we've already gone through half a year, do you not have that 1.7 million? Where is that at?
Right now, the 1 point, the 3.4 million as well as the 700,000 is sitting in the deferment. So when the budget was adopted, there was total revenues between federal and state of about 4.8 million. What was because of COVID, 6.9 million was actually deferred. On the expense side, we took out the 3.4 million for the, the raises and then the 700,000 for the positions. And basically what we did, the county did and we did, is we took our adopted budgets and created a deferred revenue line and a deferred expense without putting in its specific revenues and/or expenses. So it's sitting in the deferment. Once that gets released, then there's one point, or half a year, as you said, that would be available to cover any potential shortfalls. The challenge would be, is what will FY '22 be? Which we all are, are faced. While it gets you through FY '21, but you don't know what the impact will be for FY '22.
So since you guys are not going to retroact and, and correct me if I'm wrong, since you're So since you guys are not going to retroact and and correct me if I'm wrong, since you're not going to be able to go back and the the raises would start.
January 1st.
January 1st. Well, that's still a hun, uh, 1.7 million dollars that you deferred, that you haven't spent. And not.
Right, and the intent that we've said publicly would be if that 1.7 is not touched, and it's not needed for the ADM in FY '21. Because right now, what the governor, when he signs it, will give us, the hold harmless is whatever our March 30th of 2019 ADM, of 20 ADM was compared to what it was on September 30th. You get the higher of the two, which for us will be March 30th of 2020. That stays in place until March 30th of this year, of 2021, I mean. On April 1st, the question is, is it going to revert back to the law, which says if our ADM dropped in September 30th, we would see an adjustment in our state revenues spread out throughout the rest of the year, and then trued up on March 30th. Okay? Well, as Dr. Meyer said, that's 300 students. If we were to lose 300 students, that's about the 1.7 million dollars. So it covers that. Now, soon the harm harmless goes, is is in place, just like Dr. Meyer did when when the pandemic took place, was let's not spend dollars that we don't have to. And let's create that cushion, because nobody knew what the pandemic was going to be and where we were going to spend our dollars. And I'm glad we did, because that gave us the dollars to do the three plus million dollars we've already ordered related to the pandemic event, and do the things we could for feeding and for PPEs and everything else that we've done with with those funds. That 1.7 could carry into FY '22 if we don't spend it, and then be available for Dr. Meyer and the school board as a cushion against whatever impact we may see in '22 that we just don't know about yet.
Okay, and so that is separate than this 1.7 that you're showing here, and with that 700,000 may go towards the stipend, and that would still be a million that you have for cushion. So you'll have that million left over if you if you use part, a million two, million two five, if you only use 500,000 from that seven. Am I getting that correct?
But that's assuming that that, so that 1.047 was created where we took 2.086 at the end of FY '20. And we we put that over into operations and maintenance as just a placeholder. We didn't have a specific project. As we're going into, and you know, if you looked at where our capital expenditures have gone, Margaret Beeks' HVAC system, Margaret Beeks' fire alarm, Gilbert Linkus' fire alarm. Um, you know, completing the CHS athletic project, you know, there's, you know, valid expenses that have taken place. The things that we are facing as we go forward on the CES, CPS, and BES is dollars to do the FFNE, which we kind of planned on the two and a half cent money that we get. But what about routes? I mean, you go into, you know, just like your buildings, they're very old, they've got needs. And so um, if we spend that dollars, that that gives me really no cushion on my capital side, you know, for facilities uh, that may come up. But yes, ma'am, you're correct.
And you're correct, VACO meeting, that was very a big concern, and Mary asked a question, Ms. Biggs, Supervisor Biggs had asked a question. Um, it looks like it'll be held harmless, of course, we don't know until we get it signed, this year, but they're not guaranteeing anything, anything for the following years. And so I know we're only talking about the stipend here, but the big picture is, once you do the stipend, once you do the raises, and of course, we appreciate and we know, I know firsthand what these teachers and staff have done, stepped up. Um, but the concern is, in that FY '21, '22 year, what happens when you don't have the 1.8? Then you can't sustain the raises, and then you're looking at laying off employees.
Right, exactly, and that's why we, that that first, that's why we can't retro, because we we may need that money to roll into next year. We do have an expectation, I mean, we were growing, you know, leaps and bounds up until this point. I mean, we do have a, you know, an expectation that our um, that that we will get back up to maybe 9,800 by the beginning of next year, but definitely the following year. I'd say we'd gain half of it back next year if I had to guess, okay? And um, and so it will not be as much of an impact, but we we may need that money for operational expenses, which is not something that I would ever want to do. But if we need it to make sure we keep employees, because here's the thing, when the kids do come back, we're going to need the same amount of employees, you know? And so it wouldn't be any good to lay anybody off next school year, um, because at some point, we're going to, they're they're going to come back and the county's going to keep growing, and we're going to need, we're going to need um, our employees. And so we, that is something that we're looking forward to the next year. Now, there's, there's some lobbying efforts to even start talking right now about hold harmless for next year as well, because I've seen some um, some drafts of um, of the Superintendent Association's um, request to legislation. And that's one of the big ones too, that we're starting to talk about that now to try to make sure that happens, because there will be counties that will be in tough shape even next year. And so um, so yeah, but you know, we looked at our loss of enrollment this year, and actually, uh, and this is what makes us more confident that we will go back up. It was mostly in K 1 and 2. Of course, kindergarteners that have never even been to our school, you know, and families seem to have held them out. We had a lot of families who transfer, we can't, we could keep up with this, transferred to private schools because they did offer a full day program. And so they're going to school full days, and that's what the families needed. We anticipate that those families will return as well. Maybe not all 300 next year, but um, that's why that first part of that raise, we want to make sure we have that in case we need it in general operating budget for next year.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Are there any more follow up questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
I do, I do.
Make it, make it snappy, get, the hour is getting late.
You never formally asked us for any money of the CARES money, but you did share with us that you could use the CARES money. Is that true, or is that?
The letter, I'm sorry, the letter.
No, I mean, prior to this letter from the last.
Not formally, no.
Right, right. We were just discussing. We were looking to spend, make sure that we.
Trying to make sure we all get to zero at the end of the year.
Right. Um, so tonight, we're just talking about the stipend.
Right. Yeah, um, on December 1st, our school board, um, they saw this request at the last meeting, our school board will um, I I assume will most likely um, vote to send you all another letter requesting the money that y'all have deferred to come back to us for our second half year raises and and that kind of thing, those little over $6 million, something like that, between state revenue and y'all's 1.55 million.
Yeah, we're all hoping the governor signs the budget.
That's right.
Yeah, so hopefully, governor signs the budget between now and December 1st, so that you, uh, so that we'll get get that to y'all, y'all's first meeting in December. Um, so that will be coming a as well later on.
Um, the the only thing that I wanted to to try to get a little bit better idea, I mean, sometimes I'm like, I don't want to split hairs, but uh, listening to my colleagues of the 78 employees that are technically part time and don't work, you know, full time, maybe, maybe half of them really don't. I don't know. Do you have a sense of how many really don't work full time?
Um.
Because even if we cut it in half, that's 39 employees, that's $39,000. That is money, that's half of a person, that's, you know.
I understand that, um.
And depend, you know, depending on how we discuss part time employees, you know, do we want to give our part time employees $2,000 just so that everything's fair across the board?
Yeah.
Or not? You know, we want to know the number so that we can say, okay, we can't get to that, so we'll release 461,000.
I can't, yeah, I understand what you're asking, but I can't promise the school board, and talking to members too, even after they were voted, they they were pretty adamant about our part time folks receiving the same amount. And so I would have to take that back, and it would be a decision that they would have to make at the end of the day as to how they divvy them any monies that you all allotted us up.
Okay, thank you.
And so, you know, just a reminder, we we would really like for you to change the category at minimum this evening of the one, yeah, that's in that letter, that 1, um, 1,38,883 dollars, correct?
Approve the letter, then that'll also approve the categories.
Well, approving the letter, I, that would be assessed from you guys, because in the letter, it has a million dollars for the actual.
The 1,345,633,94 to allow you to use carryover money for the COVID stipend, and then a million 38,883 to reclassify from operations and maintenance.
Okay, and let me ask this question too, to you two. The 1.3 of our CRF money is actually going to be a reimbursement from the 20 budget, is any?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we can do, they can do that, though, under new business.
But I can also extend that inside my category, yeah.
How much is that again?
1.345.
Yeah, this right here. It's in the letter. Yeah, that one, yeah, that 1,345.
Poor Josh. We need to be on the mics.
That 1,345, um, it is our money, but what it's doing, it's reimbursing money from 20, which then creates care, new carryover money for my general funds that we didn't have at the end of 20. So.
Freeze it up so you could, right.
Yes, that's the shell game you're talking about, yeah.
Fungible.
Fungible.
Fungible, that's what it was, exactly, all right. So I'm just depending on.
We're good, we're good, we got, we got you.
Needs to be spoken to.
We got you on that one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Can we?
Uh, we have a motion to come out of work session?
Sir.
I thought she was giving me the peace sign.
No.
Peace to you too, sister.
So I just want to make sure that we can reclassify the 1,038.
We can, if the board desires to do so.
And we can appropriate the 1,345.
We can, correct, Ms. Hill? Yeah, it's right in front of me.
Right here.
It's in the board doc.
Oh, okay.
And then lastly, if we say 500,000 of CARES Act money, that's.
Whatever number the board.
Or whatever.
Right. Mr. Chair, I wanted to to mention one other thing. I know the question came up earlier about county part time employees. We have 83 county part time employees, and Angie's been running some numbers. I'm not sure how many are over, under 20 hours a week, but if the board wanted, I know the board's already made a decision on that issue, but the question for the county side would be if you wanted to include all part time county employees, it would be another $83,000.
That's all I had.
Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs? Aye. Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Frizikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now we're going to enter new business, which is um, going to be some uncharted territory, much like a previous meeting we had where we had to come up with motions. But let's uh, take them one at a time. Um, the first one is the ordinance, the special use permit for Verizon Wireless.
Motion.
Got a motion? And a second, any discussion?
Um, there there was one person that uh, was against.
We're discussing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
So do we want to take a vote on that tonight, or do do we want to do what we have in the past, and that is to wait until next meeting?
Yeah, I would.
So is there like a consensus?
Let me just say this while we're discussing it. You know, I live right next to where this is going. And uh, I have talked to some of the neighbors out there, and they think it's a good thing.
That's good to know.
I live right next, I mean, not right beside of it, less than a quarter of a mile. And the field you seen, that's where a lot of people go hunting and stuff, isn't it?
Okay, how do we kick the can, Marty?
The most of, the most efficient way to kick the can would be to uh, entertain a motion to table to the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to table it to the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Just a second, I have to change the. To table.
Well, you're going to be changing a lot of stuff tonight.
And we're table it to the next meeting, correct?
Right.
All right. Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs? Aye. Mr. Motts?
Say aye.
Don't be telling me how to vote. Reluctantly, aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Frizikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes to table to the next meeting.
All right, our next item on the agenda is a resolution in opposition to any legislative effort to repeal or revise the judicial doctrine of qualified immunity for law enforcement officials. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, any discussion?
Um, I'll just say one thing, um, I know that this across the state is looked at differently depending on where, you know, where you're located. And so when it does get to the General Assembly, if it if it does, again, it's, there'll probably be a lot of discussion, but that would be my only comment.
Okay. Madam Secretary, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs? Aye. Mr. Motts?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Frizikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now we're getting into the weeds here.
Well, now we have the one addenda item, the resolution.
Yes, that's right.
Honoring Ms. Edmonds.
I'd like to move the resolution honoring Ms. Edmonds, and I want to tell you, that resolution was really well written.
Yes.
It really covered, it really covered everything Carol had done, because I've been here most of the time Carol was here. I mean, it was excellent. Hats off to whoever did that.
Ms. 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 Kaiser started the resolution, and these ladies and I lean my hand enhanced it, so thank you for that.
Second. So we got a motion in a second, is there any more discussion?
Do you think Carol will come to a meeting to receive it?
Yeah.
She made it clear that she was uncomfortable coming this evening, because even though she does, she's not even seen it, she just was concerned how she would be.
But she'll come to be presented with it, right?
Take her to the middle of the night and call her.
Might involve some trickery, maybe. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs? Aye. Chair Frizikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now our next item will be to I guess, to do something with that 1.345 million.
Can we appropriate the, I make a motion to appropriate the 1,345,633?
Yeah, I I was going to ask before, can we get?
Can we, can I change my motion and say that I make a motion to reclassify the 1,03883?
Well, what I'd like to ask before any motions are made, I appreciate that, is let us make sure we're all schools and county clear on what it is that we're resolving to do. I I I hear, I think we, I think we've got it, but I just want to make sure we're all moving in the same direction. Angie, you want to start?
Okay, I'll yell. I don't know if we're wiped off. So uh, Tommy and I talked about where that needs to go, because we need to, for the um, 1.3, that it's going to be a reimbursement, we would need to know what category that needs to go into. And also, we are going to transfer funds from the operation and maintenance to other categories. We don't have the exact breakdown tonight, so if we put it all in instruction, that will work if those two amounts are appropriated into instruction. And then if adjustments need to be made between the categories later as things are trued up, or as the funds that have been deferred are released, we can come back and do that.
Instruction, not construction.
Instruction.
Thank you.
Yes, instruction.
So you're.
That's your motion.
That is my motion, the 1,03883.
Thank you.
And 1,345,633 to be reallocated to instruction.
I'll second that.
Hold on just a second. You really mean that you're going to appropriate the 1.3?
345,633, I want to appropriate that.
You're going to appropriate that into the.
Into instruction, okay, and reclassify the 1,03883.
Yes.
Into instruction.
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Tommy?
Yes.
That's what you need.
That's my motion. We can do it in one.
We can do both at the same.
Okay.
And I second it.
And that'll take care of two of the three pieces that are in the school's letter, yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
One question. Now, that money will be for their stipend, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All of it?
Yes, sir. And then we'll true that up, and if we have to move any of it back, you know, from into operations and management transportation, you would see that adjustment at a later time. Because I've got money in those budgets today that can pay the stipend and maintenance. If I've got, you know what I'm saying, for the rest of the year.
Just stay there till we're done, Angie.
Because.
Some of the employees will be getting paid out of the other. Some of the employees will be getting paid out of the other categories, not all of them will be paid the stipend out of instruction, but we can go ahead and put it there, and he has enough money in those other categories to pay those employees the stipend.
Correct, and then make the adjustment.
And then adjust it later if we need to.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Do I need to read this disclosure, Marty, yet, on this one?
Hmm, which is one?
This, this.
It's just putting the money into the instructional category.
Is this just changing the category?
It's reclassification and appropriating.
But they will be using it for stipends, so that would affect him.
You might want to just go ahead and make the disclosure, but you can still vote.
So required disclosure, transaction involved, provide county funding to be used by school board to provide pay supplements to school board employees. You were real close to the paper.
Yeah, he, he writes like a, like a doctor.
Doctors, lawyers.
Personal interests, currently, I'm an employee of the school board, may receive the pay supplement, and my wife, I'm a member of a large group of school employees which are affected by the transaction, I am able to participate in this transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, aye.
Okay, Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Fajekowski?
Yeah, here we go again, required declaration, transaction.
Interested. Involved.
Involved. Marty, you got to do better than that. Provide county funding to be used by school board to provide pay supplements to school board employees, two, nature of the, nature of the personal interest, currently, am, this is, my wife is currently employed by the school.
Correct, right.
May receive the pay supplement, three, I am a member of a large group, school employees which have.
Affected by this transaction.
Affected by the transaction. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, aye.
Okay, seven ayes.
Okay, so now do we make the motion about the five hundred thousand dollars in the CARES money, and how should that motion be set up, Angie, so it goes the right way?
The CARES funding, all of our CARES funding has already been appropriated, and it hasn't been appropriated to a specific category, so you don't need to appropriate that, but you can, you should make a resolution to use whatever amount you're going to propose, a half million, to transfer to the school operating fund.
School operating fund, okay.
And then there will be part two to that, which will be to appropriate to the instructional category.
Some of the school.
Half a million dollars.
Category.
From the county transfer.
Okay, so does that have to be two separate motions then, or can that be all together?
I think it can be one.
Okay, all right, I will make a motion to transfer, or to, yeah, the five hundred thousand dollars from the county to, to use on, into the school operating, let me make sure I got this right, school operating fund to be appropriated into the instructional category, there you go.
Is there a second?
Uh, yeah, second.
Any discussion?
That money's going for stipends too, right?
Yeah.
Do we need to put that in there?
We can't.
No, that, that money's actually going to COVID expenses, right?
Yes, COVID money.
Going to use it for stipends.
No, it'll be.
No, no.
It's fungible, but, but that money's actually going to cover COVID expenses, so no, you do not have to disclose.
Freeze up the other.
You don't want me to read that again?
Aye.
No.
Okay, okay.
As, as far as discussion goes, though, I did want to say, and I don't think I said it earlier, I agree with what you were talking about earlier, Supervisor King, that if the hold harmless thing doesn't work out, I think we need to be supportive of the schools in March, or whenever that would be, I think that it's pretty important that we maintain an open mind, knowing that at least I have said that I feel this way, and you've said that you feel that way as well.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say, for the, and I look forward to our joint meeting on November the 30th, because I feel that there is a broken down, miscommunication, misinformation, and I'd hate to see that, because I think this board and I greatly appreciate Montgomery County teachers, staff, aides, bus drivers, everyone that have worked hard, stepped up, I've seen firsthand all the struggles and sacrifices they've made, and it's imperative that we have a good, open, transparent, honest relationship with the school board, and I appreciate the members being here tonight, I just feel that it's unfortunate that we should have probably already had all these discussions in the beginning, and known all of the facts, all the information before we, and together move forward, and so I am glad to see that we can put money and offer money of our CARES funding to help give stipends and bonus, bonuses to Montgomery County school system, and in future, I hope that we can just have more open communication so that everybody is on the same page, because that is imperative for us.
And I totally agree with that, and I think I've been saying that for the last two meetings, and I, and I think that will be very helpful, and I also want to say something about if they don't get the hold harmless, they'll have to come back to us anyway, and so, and I'm very supportive of, of trying to deal with that also.
And I'd like to say that I'm in favor of helping them if they don't get the entire harmless, too, I think it's very important for, for all the employees to get a stipend, so.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Do I have to read that again?
No, sir.
Aye.
Thank goodness.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Fajekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
You got to read it again.
Yay.
All right, think that ends all new business, is anybody aware of any other new business that we need to address? Craig, how about you?
Not aware of anything we need to add.
Okay, all right, our next item is reports, county attorney.
Just to my defense, I thought I wrote that pretty neat.
Yes, we'll, we'll give you a framed copy of it.
Artwork.
Other than that, I have no report.
County administrator.
Just to clarify the county attorney's remarks, it usually takes Vicki, Nancy, me, and Amy to figure out Marty's handwriting usually, so I, I do want to thank you again for working through, we knew this agenda tonight was going to be challenging, I appreciate all the, the work, appreciate the work of the schools, we all value all our employees, part-time and full-time, it, it, it's been a tough season, the CARES money has created a level of work for, I said that in a previous meeting, I know Dr. Meyer and Mr. Krantz and their staff are working crazy trying to figure out how to deal with it, I know on our side, Angie, Jennifer, everybody on our staff has worked really hard, and that goes all the way down to the part-time people, I don't ever want anything to sound like every employee we have in this organization's important, but I appreciate all the support, and I know from hearing from a number of employees after the action this board took Monday before last, how much they appreciate your recognition of their efforts as well, thank you, that's all I have, sir.
All right, now, board reports, I'm going to go down the list, and the list starts with Supervisor Blevins.
I just wanted to thank all of our veterans, as tomorrow is Veterans Day, for their service and sacrifice for our country, that's all.
Supervisor King.
I just want to thank the staff, I know they went through a hole, and they're still going through it, but I want you to know that I do personally appreciate it, I mean, I know you've got figures coming in your head, and when you get home, your spouse says, would you leave that at work, but I do appreciate your spouses, and I know they go through a lot, too, but we're going to get through this together, as we always have.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
Um, I echo what Supervisor Blevins said about veterans, and I'm so glad that we're going to be able to celebrate that tomorrow, each in, I guess, our own way now, I am so proud of our board tonight as far as being able to come to a resolution about the stipends, and, you know, sort of get everything out on the table, and now we can move forward and, and, you know, and develop our communication with the school board and, and school staff. I did want to tell you all that we wanted to originally plan a grand opening for the finished runway at the airport, and so there's some discussion about how to do that in COVID times, because, you know, you don't want a large group, so what we ended up doing at the airport today is we are going to have Keith Holt, who is the executive director, he will be contacting our public relations person, and then the two towns, and Virginia Tech, and we've, we thought of maybe just until the COVID situation is over, having like maybe a virtual tour that we could put up on websites or something, we're just trying to think outside the box, so the runway is open, it's just that we haven't been able to have the ribbon cutting or anything, so I just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Thank you, Supervisor DeMots.
I'm surprised that Supervisor Biggs didn't mention the VACO conference, well, I know it's been mentioned several times during the meeting.
Well, you guys better be there tomorrow at nine thirty.
We are midway through it, and I know, I've been on all the calls, because I've been sharing bandwidth with students who have been taking tests and stuff on their Chromebooks, and so I haven't wanted to cause any interference on their schoolwork, so I've just been calling into those meetings, but I know you've been there, you've been there, Mary's been there, what about?
I, I've been there.
I've been there.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, you've been on the calls, yeah, so they've been great, it's strange to have a virtual conference, but it's also great that we still get to have the education of a virtual conference through VACO, so that's been a really interesting thing to go through this week, and as Supervisor Blevins mentioned, Veterans Day, one of the most touching things that has happened with regards to Veterans Day that really was very impactful to me was a project that my son did at Falling Branch Elementary School many, many years ago, he's a junior in high school now, so that was a million years ago, but it just touches me the importance of the schools in making sure that our students are aware of the importance of national holidays, it sounds inappropriate to call it a holiday, but, but at, at Falling Branch, they had children bring in photos of their family members who were veterans, and my little brother is a three-time Iraq War veteran, and my, my grandfather actually was shot on D-Day on the beach, and survived miraculously, and price is named after him, and so it was just really cool how, and, and I'm sure the, the teachers will do amazing and interesting things this year as well for the students to learn the importance of that, but thanks for bringing that up, that's something that always touched me, so thank you, of course, to all of our veterans, as we celebrate that, and that's all that I have.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I have a couple of things, the EDC, Economic Development Commission, is meeting for the first time since COVID started, they're meeting at 11:30 a.m., which means I'm unable to attend that meeting on Thursday the third or Thursday the 10th, if anyone would like to attend a Zoom meeting in my stead.
I'm the alternate.
Okay.
What, what was that, what date?
That December?
December, you mean.
December the third or the 10th, I don't know, she said, Brenda Rigney said she confirmed the date after she, after you got with her, I'll send you the email.
Yes, yes, sir.
Second, specifically, I want to shout out to my ex, believe it or not, father-in-law, he's ninety years old, he, I think he just got out of the hospital today with COVID, he is a veteran of the Coast Guard, where he was stationed in Honolulu, Hawaii, and he actually retired on disability, so, and the worst part about the whole thing is his wife had COVID, too, and my ex-mother-in-law, and she passed away last night, so just feel for both of them, but anyway, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, vice chair, Bone.
I'd like to honor the veterans also, my father was in the Army, plenty of uncles in various arm, you know, branches, my husband also in the Norwegian Army, oh, actually, Air Force, it's, it's a worldwide thing that, you know, Norway fights in a lot of the wars, too, so thank you to the veterans, and Dr. Meyer, specifically, the Marines, HUAW, or whatever you guys say. I also want to say that I'm glad that this board took the time, as well as the school board members took the time, as well as all the teachers and aides and staff took the time to email all of us, we probably got about fifty emails about the stipends and raises, that really does make an impact, certainly, Mr. Krantz, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Curran, and, and the whole board, as well as our staff, you know, it's not easy to divvy up finite dollars, but, but if we work together, we'll make good progress, and hopefully we'll all get to where we want to get, and I think today was a good step, so thank you, that's it.
Yeah, and I want to pile on, too, on the Veterans Day thing, yeah, besides Dr. Meyer, Michael Geary back there, he's, he's officially a veteran, even though he's still in, and then we got two old retirees here, Sheriff Parton and Steve Fajekowski, I don't know if there's anybody else left in there that, that may be a veteran, if I miss somebody, sorry, but, yeah, I think I might take the day off tomorrow, oh, that's right, I'm retired, I'm off every day. I do want to say I am glad that we came to some kind of agreement on the stipends for the school employees, like I said previously, every one of them deserve it, they're not lying, they, they all deserve it, and I'm glad they're going to get it, and with that, we are adjourned.
Yay.
Yay.